And the ones along this wall range between 1 and 20 seconds. And the outlines of the subject soften when I do that. And it shows some of the motion. That's not the only type of photography I do. The ones around the corner are reflection photographs, a different technique. And I also take some purely conventional straight photographs, although I like to try to take, you know, maybe an unconventional approach to the subject matter. And then if it's still too bright for a long exposure, I use a darkening filter in front of the lens. Generally, I just hand-hold it and let the natural motion of my body, you know, it sort of plays sort of a random role in this. And then I look at what the results are. I take photography seriously, but I don't take my own photography too seriously. I try to, you know, create a little playfulness, and I hope that comes out here.
I'm inspired by women, women in very vulnerable situations. All those pieces address the whole issue, which is just, women are often victims in war, and they don't have any power. We're the most powerless. We don't have power, because we don't usually carry around weapons or anything like that. We're just trying to take care of our families, or, you know, secure the home, or whatever. I started out as a painter, and so I found the faces, and I made them into sort of a graphic design so that they could be less personal and not, to kind of protect their identity and their privacy, but I would still know who they were. So I painted that on transparent Mylar. And I also used steel and acrylic. And some of the things that I've done in the work, for instance, I've made shapes that are like nests. And so the nest is a symbol of feminine power for rebirth. I wanted to show that, one, their vulnerability, but, two, their own strength, their internal strength, their resilience. You know, they're not just victims anymore. I wanted to give them some kind of internal power. And also, I use the word, the shape of the circle, which is kind of, shows the individual, and it also shows the whole. And in this respect, I'm thinking, we have to take care of all of humanity. We can't just, we have to stop the violence.
The sunset was just perfect, and I said, no, we have to stop here. So I'm in the middle of nowhere, pull over, and I have to get, my wife knows the drill now. I get out with my camera, and the way I work, this is actually a picture of maybe 30 different photographs bumped together in Photoshop. That's the way I do it. So I have to chock, kachock, 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 kachock. So it takes me maybe five or 10 minutes, or 15 minutes, to photograph a single object. I saw a book with 20 or 30 of these works by David Hockney, and I fell in love with it. And I said, I want to try doing that. So for the past seven or eight years, that's what I've been doing. All my photography is collages of many photographs put together on a single backing board. And then later, now, I do it all entirely in Photoshop.
I work in fused glass, kiln-formed glass. It's not blown glass. It's a little different process, where you're cutting and shaping and forming the glass, and then fusing it in a kiln. One like this, which is fairly complex, takes me days of cutting and assembling the piece. And then it takes one, two, sometimes three different firings in the kiln, and each firing takes usually overnight. So it's got to go to 1,480 degrees Fahrenheit, so good temperature. And because it's glass, it can't accept sharp changes in temperature, so it's got to heat up slowly, and it's got to cool slowly. I cut and shape and assemble the glass onto the sheet, and then it's fused in the kiln. So I'm not actually working in the kiln. It just, all the design takes place beforehand, gets fired. Sometimes when it comes out, I add to it and fire it again. A couple of years ago, I was out in New Mexico and traveling around, and I got to see some of the natural sights, and a little more familiarity with the local culture, Native American culture, some of the symbolism. And I just started working with all those ideas at once, the symbolism of more or less a sunset, or a sun symbol, and radiating out using the colors of the sunset. And the technique is called tapestry. So if you look closely, it looks like the pieces are going over and under, and over and under. Initially, I had been doing silversmithing, and I saw somebody wearing a glass pendant, similar to what I have on. And I thought, wow, that's really interesting. I could incorporate my silver and glass. But once I got started in the glass, I discovered a medium that I just couldn't stop working.
(SINGING) If only you'd heard the song before. If only, if only you sing one mind's mure.
I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Here.
Councilmember Costa.
Here.
Councilmember Simmons.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Cersei.
Here.
Great, welcome, everyone, this evening. Tonight, we're going to start off with a report to council from a consultant, Professor Conrad, who's been consulting with the city on the Tacoma Junction project. Where are my papers, sorry. Just to give you an intro, Professor Conrad has a blog that's up on the city website that you can see. He has been helping the city council specifically as we've been going through this process, I think probably since January. He has met with us individually and in small groups. To give you an introduction, he's associate provost and former dean of the School of Architecture, Planning and Preservation at the University of Maryland. He's been, and as I said, been serving as an independent third-party advisor to the city as we consider the site plan. And we wanted to give him, as I said, the blog is up on the website, but we wanted to give him a chance to speak to the council and to answer some questions before we got into our agenda this evening. So I will turn on your microphone, so you can speak to us.
Turn it.
Stop touching it. All right, it's now on.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members and public. It's a real pleasure for me to be here and to talk with you about the development. And I thought it might be helpful if I contextualized my comments by saying that what I've been doing is offering criticism, both positive and negative, of the proposal that sits before the council by a developer and a design team, so that you're in a position, as the design moves forward, to assess its advantages and disadvantages as a proposal, and also to help guide the design as it will inevitably evolve, as it does in these projects, so that you optimize the positive features for the community. And so that's the context within which I've been advising and writing about. And it really comes down to a couple of things, from my point of view, which is how to make the best possible townscape that we can, given the size of the development that's been proposed and all its constituent parts. And from my perspective, one of the key elements is that it tries to make a coherent hole out of the development, and weaves the co-op building into that hole, so that the co-op building doesn't feel as though it's an appendage, or setback, or hidden by the development, but is seen as an integral part. The second thing is that it seems to me that by following the setback of the co-op building for a majority of the development as a whole, you create a very generous public realm, or widened sidewalk, that offers some real advantages, I think, to the community. One is, you're able to have a generous sidewalk, so that pedestrians can walk up and down the block, and at the same time, have places, public places to sit, as well as if there were retail needs for cafe tables and things like that, they as well could be placed in this widened area, and not cause any disruption to pedestrian flow, and not detract from the pedestrian experience, the public experience. The other thing that I thought was quite distinctive about the design, and I think it's important to realize that there are many, many, many different alternatives for exactly the same footprint, for exactly the same distribution of parts. And one of the features that I thought was quite positive was the canopy that was being proposed, particularly if that canopy is at the same height as the co-op. And what that tends to do is provide an eyebrow, or a line is struck that tends to keep the eye lower and focused on the public area, and stops the eye from drifting above and focusing on what's above. So that means where the pedestrians are, where the public gathers, where the activity is, tends to be consistent, from the corner where the co-op is, all the way down to the entrance to the parking garage, where it's proposed to be located. That has, in addition to making a strong horizontal line that helps direct the eye and integrate all that activity into the cone of vision, it also has a great asset, and that is, if in the evening, the lighting was so designed so that it was indirect lighting, and it lit the underside of that canopy, and then that light was bounced down onto the sidewalk, the effect is that it's much brighter and more safe to people walking by than if you have lights embedded in the canopy, or hanging down from the canopy, shining at just the sidewalk, which is what you often see. What that means is that there is less light spillage, direct light source spillage into the neighboring areas. And I think that's a real positive thing. The other thing is it reduces the need for internally illuminated signs, and I think that's very important as well. If you imagine that there are several retail establishments, and each one has their own sign under the canopy that's internally illuminated, that can be a source of light pollution that bleeds out into the neighbors. And if you light the underside of this canopy, you can have just simple signage that doesn't need any extra lighting, it doesn't have to be internally illuminated. And when that's well-designed, that can also add to the liveliness of the pedestrian experience. I think there was some confusion, and Peter asked me about this just when we were getting started here, about something I wrote in the blog, and that is, that I've heard some people be concerned about the height of the first floor. That is to say, the amount of distance there is between the ground floor and the first floor, particularly if the canopy is struck at the height of the co-op. Some people, as I understood, were concerned that that would mean that the first floor would be as high as the co-op. And what I was trying to suggest is that's not necessarily true. That canopy can be aligned with the underside of the windows, the sill height of the windows on the second floor. And if you imagine that you just take the second floor and push it down, rather than keeping it as high as was in the design, but you actually can lower it, so that now the canopy, rather than being at floor level, is actually struck at the sill height of the windows, that would help lower that distance. I also think that a positive aspect of the proposed design was the widening of the setback on the, I believe it's the western edge of the site, just before you get to the parking garage entrance. And I thought that was a very strong aspect of the design. One of the things that appealed to me is that they, I think, struck a very good balance, so that that was wide enough that it felt, as I called it, a mini plaza, wide enough so that it becomes a little additional public area, so that you could imagine people congregating there, you could imagine a juggler, or someone playing a guitar, and having some people crowd around and listen to that activity, without, again, impeding the pedestrian flow, and at the same time, not disrupting the retail activity as well. And I think that's a delicate thing to create. If you set back the retail too much from the flow of the pedestrians, then it can become removed from the activity. It seems it's hard to draw people into that retail. And if it's too close to the pedestrian, as I say, the setback isn't far enough, then it just becomes a gratuitous space, where you often find leaves collecting, and kind of trash and leftover kind of thing, that nobody really takes ownership for, and nobody really feels responsible for. So I thought they did a good job at finding a good dimension there. And I think as the plans develop with additional plantings and street furniture, that could be a real asset. Now, it's not a large plaza or a large assembly space, but it's one of those kinds of spaces that I think for a modest-scale kind of retail area, it provides the opportunity for some liveliness, as well as someone to tarry, without buying a cup of coffee, or a soft drink, or an ice cream, to find a seat and relax. Another thing that I thought was positive, but needs to be carefully monitored if this proposal moves forward, is the wooded area behind the development. Hasn't been much attention paid to that. Without a doubt, the construction will impact that area. And so when it's put back together, I think we want to, you want to make sure that you get a good plantings in there that have both trees and undergrowth, so that it provides a good buffer onto Columbia Avenue. I think that that's a real asset, and could make the site a little bit better than it is now. If you go by there right now, it's kind of overgrown, not very well-kept. And I think that could be a real positive thing, if it's developed properly and cared for as the design moves forward. I also thought that placing parking underground and putting the entrance at the far western edge of the site was probably a very, was the best alternative, given the constraints on the site. There are two things that I'd like to point out there. One is the ramp, as it's designed, is of sufficient length, so that when you come up from the parking garage, you actually can get level before you cross the sidewalk. And those of you who have occasion to walk in Washington DC and confront underground garages where the cars come right up onto the sidewalk and they're inclined, it's hard for the driver, I speak from experience there, to see everything that's going on. So being at level is a lot easier, and allows you to approach in a more controlled way, I believe. And also, I think, at that point, you should be able to, in the current design, have good visibility, so that it's less likely to run into a pedestrian. The other thing about the parking garage that I wanted to point out is that I think there's a great opportunity to open the underground parking garage out the back, so that it's not totally underground, or feel as though it's buried. That's an advantage that the sloping site on the back offers. And that will, I think, increase the sense of safety for people who are going into the garage at night. However, with that said, there are some, some care has to be taken in the way in which the design is developed. So the first thing I would say is you want to make sure that any opening in the back isn't so low that when someone gets in their car and turns on their headlights, it doesn't shine out right through the back and into the surrounding neighborhood. The other thing is, I would again encourage that lighting in the garage be aimed at the ceiling, and therefore it's indirect. The general feeling is, like at the canopy, when you see light on a surface, it tends to brighten things up than if you just aim it at the ground. And so we, as designers, tend to try and light walls and ceilings to try and make things seem brighter, even though you're reducing the number of foot candles, and therefore saving energy. Some of the challenges that I think are left unsaid, and I think the design, we have to get more information in order to know exactly whether or not the optimum solution has been found. The one I would suggest has to do with trash. I think the proposal isn't out of the ordinary. They have right now a service alley between the co-op and the rest of the development, where I think they're envisioning that at the end of that service alley would be some small dumpsters, that's where the trash would be collected for the development, and then when a trash pickup comes, they'd wheel that out to the sidewalk and get picked up. That probably works really well for certain kinds of retail, and depending on what the office use is about. But if we're planning, or if they're planning to have a restaurant, particularly a busy restaurant that is full-service, then I think that gets to be a little bit of a challenge, because we have to find a way to store refuse. It probably involves a cold box. It involves much more management on the part of the development ownership, to make sure that things are cleaned up, public realm is swept clean, and, you know, this doesn't become excessive. Again, it's hard to know, but what was shown in the site plan that we saw, it seemed a little modest to my eye, and going forward, I think that has to be looked at, and to make sure that it's adequate and carefully thought out. I don't think it's my role to propose solutions. That takes a lot of time, as a professional, and study, and a lot of input. But I will go out on a limb and say that it does look like there might be the possibility of having some refuse storage at the bottom of the ramp going down to the garage. That really has to be looked at. It would cause some challenges for a trash truck to go down there and pick up a dumpster, but I think that could be managed if you coordinate the time of day that it happens, and not cause too much concern. The other thing I know has been a concern is the lay-by for the large tractor-trailer truck. And what I would say is that a loading zone next to the curb, where you would typically find parking, is not an unusual occurrence, in the same way that it's not unusual to service some retail through a side alley, like is being talked about. It's not unheard of, it's not strange. Is it ideal, in Tacoma Park, to imagine a large tractor-trailer out there at the lay-by? I think that's up to a strong debate, but it is plausible and possible. And it would provide a way, without bringing those large trucks onto the site, it would be a way to accommodate that need by the co-op. When those large trucks aren't there, I think, like all loading zones, it's a place where at night you're picking up an Uber, or Lyft drops you off, or if you're coming by to pick up somebody, you pull in there just for a minute to pick them up, and you're on your way. In my estimation, trying to bring those large tractor-trailers onto the site makes it very difficult for me, knowing the amount of space and area that they need to turn around and maneuver. It makes it very difficult for me to see a plausible, possible development. Certainly not of the quality and size that's in this proposal. And I think it would, what has to be discussed, and I think what you are talking about at all these many meetings, is what is the nature and quality of life that people want in this area? And I think that this particular development has some real positive features that they've identified with their proposal, that could make, in my mind, a positive townscape in Tacoma Junction, and reinforce and relate to some of the existing retail that are at that intersection. So I hope I addressed most of the questions that I've heard from you all, but if anyone had any particular questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Yes, no, you're going to get some. Councilmember Simmons' light is already on. Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for this expert opinion. I appreciate you coming here tonight and kind of helping us as we think this through. I just had a couple of questions. One was, you had mentioned the, when you were talking about the canopy, you were, you mentioned the height of the first floor and the second floor. I believe the design is proposed right now is thinking of 16-foot ceilings within the first floor, and some people have suggested maybe that should be lower. I'm just interested to hear your thoughts on that.
So I think one of the, sorry. I hope that doesn't mean the whole time I was talking I was too loud.
You're right.
I think one of the things that would really help answer that question, that we don't have, because we're looking at a site plan, is some site sections and building sections, so that we could get more, a better feeling for the size of the, and volumes of the spaces that are being created. You know, it depends a lot on how things are demised. So what you have to keep in mind is, what a developer is essentially doing is building what we call a vanilla box. Now, that doesn't mean it looks vanilla, it just means that it's standard and undifferentiated. And then they go, come back, and they actually have to find retail agents that want to rent those spaces, as you might well imagine. And they're going to need different amounts of space. And what the developer is doing is trying to get the right pairing of those things to have a successful development. If those, if things get a little too narrow, then the high ceiling can be a little bit uncomfortable. Of course, that can be easily adjusted by putting in a hung ceiling. But I think some sections there would be helpful, because then we could really determine. Again, in some places, 16-foot ceilings aren't strange. In fact, there are people who flock to find them. But I, I hear the concern, and I think after we look more carefully at the thing, at the section, I think it's possible that the, the point I want to make is the canopy isn't married to the floor.
Right.
And so there's some variety there.
I understand. During your discussion, you made a comment that the design was modest, and I just wondered what you meant by that?
I don't remember saying that, but I, I'm not calling I don't remember saying that, but I, I'm not calling you a liar.
No, that's, that's fine. That means there wasn't a whole lot of, a whole lot to be found there, just, and I could have, of course, misunderstood what you said.
Yeah, I apologize. I don't, I don't remember charactering, characterizing it as modest. Actually, I feel that, given the parcel that was made available to the developers, they've done a pretty hearty job at maximizing it within the constraints that they were, that they were given. And that's a positive, in my mind, that's a positive thing. Because if you look at it from the developer's point of view, they're making large investments in the infrastructure, and they have to find a way to make that possible so that all things can be accomplished.
And then lastly, I just wanted to ask about your experience. Have you seen similar experience where, as we look at developing a property, that you would be concerned about deliveries for the neighboring property and trash for the neighboring property and accommodating the neighbor?
So, in my experience, that's quite unusual. I think it's one of the things that this developer is trying to accommodate to be a good neighbor, but that is not the kind of typical thing that we confront.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you for being here this evening, I appreciate it. I've got a question regarding trying to make sure that we protect the existing businesses during construction, and even if this development goes forward, making sure that, you know, they stay in business. What are some best practices to make sure that the co-op, you know, has all of the things that they need, access to, to the street, access to make sure that deliveries happen on time? You know, there probably will be shut-offs of the utilities so that the new utilities can be pulled in. What can we do to make sure that the co-op and any properties nearby are protected?
Yeah, that's a great question, and it's a particularly challenge to develop this site because of the limited site area, so that there's not a lot of space for lay-down and staging to actually build the project. So I think there are a couple of things. One is, you need to protect the public way near the site so that pedestrians can continue to circulate on that side of the street. I think that'll be very important. And the reason why I think that's significant is that if you're walking in the neighborhood and you're trying to get to the co-op, it would be very, very inconvenient to have to cross the street, walk down, and then get through all the intersection to get back to the co-op there at Tacoma Junction. If the city had some land nearby that they could use, that the contractor could use for some of the staging, that could be helpful as well. I don't know whether you have any land in the near vicinity that could be used for that purpose, but that could be very helpful. One of the other things that I think you're asking is, what about the truck delivery for the co-op during construction? Because when you're digging a big hole, they're not gonna obviously be able to get access to the site as they currently do. That's gonna be a challenge, and there's no doubt about that. And as I look at the design and the way in which it's proposed, I don't see an easy way to create the lay-by first, and thereby build the building after you do that. I think that, that could be a real challenge.
There's some residents that think that this project is gonna gentrify the city. And I know probably as a professor, provost, you probably kicked that idea around in the classroom. Can you speak to what you think that this project is gonna mean if it goes forward now, five years from now, 10 years from now? Is this the, the final nail in the coffin of, in changing what Tacoma Park is, or what it represents, or?
That's a, that question makes me smile a little bit, because what you all probably don't know is that when I moved here from Louisiana, I wanted to live in Tacoma Park because I have a lot of friends who live here. I was, I couldn't afford to live in this. So the fact that you're worried about gentrification makes me smile. What I would suggest is that having additional retail that's accessible by pedestrians is an asset for a community. It means that we don't have to get into our cars. It means that to live locally has some real convenience to your life, and that I see that as a very positive thing. So, will it cause people to not be able to live in Tacoma Park anymore? I think that's a broader question that has to do with more than just the Tacoma Junction area. And that's really something that I think the council frankly has a great deal of responsibility and opportunity to deal with that issue. Because I don't think you're gonna solve gentrification in that one area, but you have to look at it in a broader picture and develop some policies that actually could move towards making sure that people of all incomes can live in Tacoma Park and participate in its richness.
And finally, the green space on the roof. The current proposal is a small postage stamp that is accessible only by the tenant. Do you have any best practices, ideas, how that can be extended so that it is more accessible by the public when you don't have to buy something from the retailers and gain access to the green space?
Yeah. So you're talking about the green space on the roof?
Yes.
So, I actually believe that it's not a great idea to make the green space accessible to the public. And the reason why I think that is a challenge is that it can cause problems by having a public space that is difficult to control. It's removed from eyes. It requires special attention to make sure that folks don't get access to it at times when you don't want them to. And it can be a nuisance for neighbors if it's used for celebrations, activities that generate a lot of noise. And so generally, I'm not in favor of those sorts of things in a, in a more neighborhood setting like, like you're dealing with. That's, that's how I look at it and how we try and deal with it.
And then, just if I may, one last question. The parking rates, you know, there, there's a lot of concern that either customers for the existing businesses won't be able to afford the parking, and even the co-op's customers won't be able to afford it. How do we ensure, if this project goes forward, that the parking rates can remain reasonable?
So have you talked to the developer about that?
Well, they've given us some numbers.
Okay. I haven't seen them, so I don't, I don't know. What, what I can tell you is our experience in College Park, where we're actively trying to develop the downtown of College Park. One of the things that we've, we have paid parking, and we have a concessionaire who runs our, the parking, that the Development Corporation, that the university and the university foundation formed in order to develop College Park. But what we've discovered is that we have a very relaxed enforcement of our parking responsible, our parking charges. And that in the end, our vendor is more successful than, than they anticipated, by a significant amount. I don't have a clear understanding or analysis as to why that happens because it's so counterintuitive. But that is a fact of what we're, what we're experiencing in College Park. Now, whether or not that applies equally at, at your location, I can't say. But it is, it is a curious phenomenon that I think we wanna study more to, to understand more fully. Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation, I appreciate it. So, just to get back to the, a little bit more, what you were talking about with respect to the canopy and the height and so on, I'm looking at one of the documents that we were given that shows the, the current proposed site plan, and it shows 18 feet with another two-foot, I suppose, between the ceiling and the, and the actual roof to get to 20 feet around the same height as the co-op for that ground floor. So what you were suggesting was that, and I think it would depend on how the windows were formulated at the top, but you could reduce relatively easily, it sounded like you were saying. I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but you could reduce by, say, three feet if the sills were around that height, but still keep the canopy at the same spot. And so that would mean that the height was more like 15 feet in the first floor instead of 18. And then on the second floor, they're proposing, the current proposal, there's 12 feet with a, with a two-foot extra space. So what's typical for, if that's office space, commercial office space on a building of this size, what's the, is 12 feet a fairly standard kind of a thing? Is that what you would see elsewhere in Tacoma Park?
If I can interrupt for just a minute, we did get corrected numbers on what the interior space is, and it's 16 feet interior to like where the pipes are, kind of on the first level, and, and 10 feet on the second floor.
But is that four feet for mechanicals and?
That's right. It's a larger section of that.
Okay. So is 10 feet fairly typical for that, then, would you say?
Yes, yes, I would say.
Okay. So, but the overall heights is the same, the 20 and the, and the 14, right? So that would be 34, so you could maybe reduce three feet from that. So some of the extra space in the height then is the parapet. So how, other than from a design point of view, I mean, is the parapet purely a design feature, or is it serves some other purpose beyond that?
So there are a couple of things that a parapet does. One is, it stops wind-blown water from blowing off the roof and onto the surrounding area. So that's a good thing. The other thing is that you're going to need some protection since they plan to put mechanical equipment on the roof. You need protection so that a work person doesn't inadvertently walk off the edge of the roof if they're carrying things. So there are advantages to having a parapet. Now, you can protect workpeople by putting up a railing, removing that railing from the edge of, of the, of the building. And therefore, you don't have to have as high a parapet. The other thing I'd, just to go back to your previous question about ceiling to roof heights, what I think you, we have to take into account right now is, the structural system has not been designed. So we don't know exactly how deep these things are going to be, nor do they, have they given us information on the particulars of the heating, ventilating, and air conditioning system and how it would have to be distributed. So the, the possibility is, as we see more details, that that space that they're currently allowing, which is four feet thick, will get less. I suspect, although I don't know, but in this kind of construction, I would be quite surprised if they don't use bar joists for the roof. That's a fairly efficient way to span when you don't have a floor load above. And so they might, they might pursue that. That would allow them to reduce that total depth, because then they can put the, depending on the depth of those bar joists, they can put the ductwork through there rather than underneath it.
One last question. You talked about the plaza, or the mini plaza, as you called it, which I think's minier than I would like it to be. You said if you push that back in too far, and then the entrance to the retail or commercial space in there is too far away, people walking by kind of don't see it, and it becomes a place where dead leaves and other things collect. One of the things that people have talked about is widening the sidewalk. So if you widen the sidewalk, but, and still had the same size inset or cutout, but it just started a little further back because the sidewalk was wider, do you see the same set of challenges? And I'm not sure if I explained that clearly.
No, I think you did, and so the description that I, that I, that you're making, I think is, what is the strategy that they're pursuing? So first of all, the facade of the development is pushed back from the curb far more than you would typically imagine because, you know, the sidewalk depth, and then usually you have the storefront right next to the sidewalk, much like in Old Town. Because the co-op is back from the side, from the curb, and they're following that same line, then you already have a widened sidewalk.
Yeah. But if it was wider still, but the inset itself was the same size as, and just a little further back, do you have that same concern you have?
My concern is the inset, not the width on the outboard side.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Actually, and I, just to follow up on that, because I think we had a conversation about this, because I always thought, oh, bigger would be better for this area. And one of the things that we had a conversation about, when you talked about sort of the placemaking of it, if you could remember that conversation and had any more to say about this mini plaza, and how do, how do we make it a place where it's not for leaves and discarded things, but will be a place where people can congregate and enjoy themselves?
Yeah, so I, I think there are important dimensions that we have, that are, that you wanna take into account when you design these things. And I would just point out that it's not, in my mind anyway, not by choice, that the arrangement of this council meeting area is in three times as big as it is. Because at the distance that we're from one another, I can actually see Susan's emotions in her face. And that's very important, to feel connected to the people you're with and to be part of the activity that takes place. If you make something too large, then you lose that connection. across the distance, and there is less of an intimacy. The other thing that I think is important is that it certainly doesn't want to be so large that it fragments into two things or three things that are competing with one another too greatly. Now, what do I mean by that? I don't mean to say that, and I believe as the space is currently designed, you can have a couple of street performers there at the same time. But what can happen is if the space isn't carefully thought about, it can get too large and you can, you can get unintended conflicts. So you may see this sometimes where there is a group that aggregates and the perimeter gets disengaged with the activity, and then they start engaging in some other thing that's disruptive to the primary activity that people are around. And that's because the space is a little bit too large, and that can cause competition. Now, I wish I could tell you that if it was this dimension by that dimension, you got absolute success. And if it's another dimension it isn't, it's not a science. And there are so many contexts involved here that affect how the space is ultimately read. But I think it's important that for that space to be successful, that the edge along the street have some planting, that there be some benches there. I also think it's really important that that space be bounded on the ends. And by that I mean, if you imagine this space, and it's not, there isn't some edges to it, it becomes easier for children who are playing to lose sense of the boundary. And now they're down the street, running in front of cars coming out of the garage, things that, while I have children of my own, and heaven knows I can't always get them to do what I wanted them to do, there are things that you can do to the space that give them a sense of enclosure so that they don't leave easily. And so I think that's an important aspect as well. And if you remember, in the design that I saw anyway, there was the elevator and stair at the one end, and of course, a retail at the other that causes that little recess that Peter was talking about. I think that whether or not the stair and elevator remain there, having something push out at that point helps define that space in a way that I think is much better than if there was nothing there at all.
Great. I don't see any other lights on, but we know where you are. So I know how to find you. And I just want to say, thank you very much for coming this evening. I hope you can stay for a little bit, but we understand if you don't. You might have a long meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you.
All right, so just to bring everybody up to speed who came in, that was a report to council from a consultant that has been working with the council since January. He's a professor at the University of Maryland. And Professor Conrad has written a blog that kind of goes over much of what he's talked about tonight, and it's up on the city website if you want more information from him. So now we'll get back to our normal meeting agenda. Looking at our meeting for tonight, there are no changes to our agenda. Moving forward, next week is May 23rd. We will be meeting here at the city council meeting. We have a number of things for the record that night. One is a presentation to the winners of the mayor's essay contest. We participate in the Maryland Municipal League Essay Contest each year if I were a mayor, and all the, it's open to all the fourth graders, actually throughout the state, and all our fourth graders at Piney Branch. This year, we have three winners, and they will hopefully be here on Wednesday night. And then on the morning of May 25th, they'll be with us at the city building and get a tour and see what it's like to be mayor for a morning. Also--
They should have come to this council.
I know. We want to encourage them. Next, we have also for the record, the Nuclear Free Tacoma Park Committee will present, a presentation of recognition and certificate of compliance with the UN Treaty for the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. Will be next week. In our voting session, we have the second reading ordinance approving traffic calming on Fifth Avenue between Orchard and Eastern Avenue, and a resolution authorizing the temporary partial closure of the Grant Avenue, of Grant Avenue for the Grant Avenue Market since it had to be rescheduled because of weather issues this past weekend. Our work sessions next week is, one will be a presentation by an investment advisor who's going to present to us on socially responsible investing. Next, we'll have our state legislative advocates report on the 2018 state legislative session. And we'll have our third quarter financial report next week. On Wednesday, May 30th, the council will not be meeting. And then we'll meet again on Wednesday, June 6th. Please be aware that our meeting on Wednesday, June 6th, will be at the Rec Center on New Hampshire Avenue. We will have two proclamations that evening and be recognizing Immigrant Heritage Month and Gun Violence Awareness Month. And I actually think we might add a third one because it's the 20th anniversary of the Dance Exchange. And they will be celebrating, actually in early June. June 1st is the celebration at the Dance Exchange, and they're planning on a block party, or really parking lot party, in their parking lot. And I believe that date is escaping me, but stay tuned, we will announce it. Our work session on June 6th will be a consideration of a property transfer between former John Nevins Andrews School and Spring Park. And I know Councilwoman Kostick has put out information to Ward 3 on this, so if anyone else needs information on that, she's been a great resource on that. Then on Wednesday, June 13th, the council will not be meeting. Most of the city council will be at the Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference that week. We come back again for our meeting on Wednesday, June 20th. On that night, we have scheduled so far, recognition of volunteers, our first reading ordinance authorizing property transfer between the former John Nevins Andrews School and Spring Park, and a work session on the presentation and discussion of the FY 19 community grants. And then scheduled so far for the week of June 27th, we have the second reading ordinance authorizing the property transfer between the former John Nevins Andrews School property and Spring Park. We wanted to bring you up to date specifically on the Tacoma Junction process moving forward. As you'll notice, that we have not yet scheduled, rescheduled a vote on the resolution. The reason is, is that we are still waiting for the signals at Tacoma Junction to be finalized by State Highway and Montgomery County so that we can get the final signalization timing, and that the traffic engineers, both our traffic engineer and the one hired by NDC, can plug that number into their models and then give us a final report. We are hoping to have that very soon. And as soon as we know when we can expect that, we will schedule a work session to go over those final reports and then schedule the vote on the resolution. So stay tuned for that, and as soon as we have more information, we will put it out. And I do apologize that some dates were erroneously put on the website this week that caused some confusion. In addition, it's been a busy week. Last week, as I reported, Councilwoman Dibala, Councilwoman Kostick, and I had a meeting with representatives from Tacoma Junction, oh, sorry, the co-op. It went very well. At that time, we talked about mediation between the co-op and NDC. And it looks like we're going to be moving forward with looking at plans for that. So we're very happy that the co-op and NDC are willing to talk about that. And we're talking about what role members of the city council will play in that as well. So thank you for everyone who participated in that. And we look forward to that moving forward. In addition, Councilwoman Kostick and Dibala and I, we've been spending a lot of time together. We met on Monday evening for, with some of the businesses in Tacoma Junction to go over the plans there. It was a very rainy night, and not everyone was able to meet it. And so we've been trying to reach out to individually, to the businesses there who could not attend. And we still haven't reached out to every, gotten ahold of everybody. We're trying to do that. And we're looking forward to having more meetings with the businesses and keeping them up to date when we have the traffic study and addressing their concerns about parking and some other issues we've discussed on Monday evening. So I think those are my updates. I'm going to turn over to the city manager and see if she has some updates on that.
I don't have any specific updates, but I just want to let folks know that there's a couple extra things. Obviously, the city council is considering the development project. And once they consider the resolution, and if there's a determination to move forward, the development goes into the county's development review process. And there've been a number of questions about that. We have good information on our website, on the Tacoma Junction page, about what the development review process is, links to similar development review processes so people can follow along. Some specific questions have come up about stormwater and about trees, and I'm going to mention them briefly. We'll talk more about them later on. The process for, the city of Tacoma Park does its own stormwater process permitting. And that starts with a concept plan. That is a very early process at the time that the process goes into the county's development review process. And in that, I do have some additional information to share later this evening, but we'll post it as well, about how the city does that. And that we don't have a tradition of waivers and those kinds of things that some people have been hearing about that the county does more often. Once the stormwater concept plan is part of kind of the application into the site plan process, once it gets near the end of the site plan process with the county, it has to come back to the city for the stormwater permit, which is a much more complex element of that. And so that's a very, it's a fairly involved process. Similarly, there's questions about trees. And some people were wondering, well, should this proposal go to the Tree Commission now? And it's too early for that, the way that we do that, although we've really appreciated that the Tree Commission submitted a nice series of recommendations about how to go forward, and we do value their thoughts. We have, I know our city forest managers worked with folks to identify the various trees on the site. So we have that information, and NDC has that information. As part of the development review process, there's a national resource inventory for a stand delineation, which is a requirement of a site plan review. And that does look at trees and that kind of thing, but the size of trees tends to be larger than the ones that we, the city pays more attention, pays attention to trees that are smaller than those that the county does. Once the site plan review process is pretty much complete so that there's a really clear limit of disturbance, that's when that information comes back to the city for the city tree process, for tree protection plans and for any requests for tree removals and going through that process. So we participate going through the development review process with the county, and we appreciate it, but it isn't the right stage for the actual kind of standard Tree Commission process. So I just wanted to let people know that it's too early for that, but we appreciate that attention. There's some back and forth because obviously if there's some particularly notable trees as the design is being done, we work around that. That's a typical, a typical approach. I'll be providing more information in writing on the Tacoma Junction page about all of these things. But I just wanted, since there'd been a number of questions, I wanted to mention that those are forthcoming. And I also would like to say that there's also a separate process, which is that, of course, we're interested in improving the intersection. And so it's a separate track for us. Obviously, there's a track for the traffic studies for this project, but the city has always been interested in looking to see if there's improvements to how the Tacoma Junction intersection works. And there's quite a lot of attention at this point about, you know, what that might be done. We may be hearing in a few weeks some information about what, how we might be able to work with State Highway on that. We are putting forward an application also for some funding for planning for that.
Thanks. Great. So just wanted to give everybody a heads up on where we are since a lot has been happening with, moving forward with mediation and all the other things tonight. So our next item is an update from our youth council.
Good evening. My name is Elthea Davey. I am the representative from the youth council. So our last meeting was on, let's see, May, the first Monday in May. It was kind of a busy one. We had a lot of guests coming in. First up, we had, we're creating our newsletter. We're almost finished with the first issue. At our last meeting, we had the editor of the Tacoma Park newsletter, April Motley, come in and to advise us on moving forward with this and how we're going to publicize it and edit it. We also had the city media specialist, Jeremy Dickey, come in to speak with us about outreach to youth over specifically social media, but all forms of media that the city could be executing. And we spoke with several members of the Committee on the Environment who just wanted to get in contact with us to potentially work on projects together in the future. We don't have anything specific yet, but there were some interesting discussions, so. Also, so I guess the only other, the other major thing is we are sad to say that our representative from Ward 4, Adam Kante, has decided to step down from her position on the council due to time constraints. And we are glad to have worked with her these past few months and wish her the best. And so eventually, we will probably be seeking to find a new representative specifically from Ward 4. That's all I have tonight. I actually have to go to testing week exams. But thank you for having me tonight, and see you next week.
Thank you, and good luck on those APs. All right, now we will move to public comments on voting items. We have a number of voting items this evening. The first item is a resolution setting policy regarding the level of the city's general fund unassigned fund balance. So this is our reserve policy. Any public comments on that? Okay, seeing none. The next item we're voting on tonight is the second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2019 tax rate.
Hi, I'm Catherine Tunus, and I am disturbed to see that this tax rate is still beyond the constant yield tax rate. I think that every comment I have seen is that people do not want their taxes going up. And I've seen that the council comments that have come out says, "Well, we're raising your taxes, but we're not raising them as much as was first recommended." Well, it means people's taxes are going to go up 5% instead of 6%, which means that households are going to be paying at least $250,000 more in taxes. And combined with the federal tax reform, if we can use that term, people are going to be paying thousands of dollars more per year in taxes. And that's related to their property taxes because they won't be able to deduct all of their property taxes. So I am disturbed that council is doing this. And I'll make my comment on the next item as well is that I think that there needs to be more cutting of the budget. I think that staff in recent years have just gone nuts thinking that the budget is their personal slush fund for their pet projects. And council needs to rein them in, so I would urge you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on the second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2019 tax rate? All right, any public comments on the second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2019 stormwater management budget? And then the final budget item is the second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2019 budget. All right, our next voting item is the first reading ordinance approving traffic calming on Fifth Avenue between Orchard Avenue and Eastern Avenue. Next item is a resolution authorizing-- Next item is a resolution authorizing an application for design project funding through the Transportation Alternatives Program. Next, we have a resolution authorizing submission of FY 19 Community Legacy Application. Then we have resolution authorizing submission of FY 19 National Capital Strategic Economic Development Application. And finally, our last voting, or no, we have a consent agenda. Our next voting item is a resolution authorizing submission of the FY 19 Strategic Demolition Applications. Okay, oops. Then we also have a consent agenda tonight for election, appointments to the Board of Elections, and appointments to the Emergency Preparedness Committee. Any public comments on those? Okay, seeing no public comments on those voting items, we will now open it up for public comments on any topic you would like. So, please line up. Wow, okay.
Excuse me, you are in front of me.
We bumped in front.
All right, if, all right. If we could line up and if there...
No, I'm already, I'm ready.
Let that lady come up here.
Ma'am, come on up.
Folks, if there are people with small children, can we ask that you let them come to the front of the line?
Ma'am, ma'am, come on up here.
Okay, take one up.
Where's Mary? Ms. Machuie, is Ms. Machuie, can we ask Ms. Machuie if she can...
Come on up front, ma'am.
I should have to ask.
Ma'am, you're welcome.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
This takes, I'm here to help people with disabilities who are often bullied. And I've seen this, but they had at the party, they had at Ace Hardware, the same thing happened, a bunch of people, young people, with just loads of stuff, because you got 20% off, were in front of me, and I waited so long I almost passed out. I would think one of these people would offer to let me in front of them and lie, not one of them. And I'm sorry, I was brought up to, if you see an older or handicapped person, you help them. And I've done that in the post office. I saw an older man, and I let him in front of me the other day. And you shouldn't have to ask, and thank you for letting me in, but I shouldn't have to ask. And I'm here to help, try to help disabled people, and I shouldn't have to ask. And as far as the co-op goes, you should be helping people with disabilities, and NDC should be helping people with disabilities too, no matter what you have here, no matter what damn business it is. Excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcel.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. My name is Marcel Baye. I worked at the Carriage High Schoolness at Tacoma Junction more than 22 years. Many of you are my customers. We are growing older than wise together. My elders and experience have taught me, if you have a project, and a lot of people don't like it, you just leave it. It doesn't mean that it's a failure, but it's a good advice. Nearly every day, from 6:30 to 7:00 p.m., I walk at Junction and see what is going on. It is not a good idea. Put a parking garage at a junction. People come in, people go in out, and that will considerably slow the traffic down. I would like to see this land use a public space, where people can meet, where people can talk with friends, where everybody will come together to play without paying any money. I'm part of Tacoma community too. I've served this community for two decades, to make sure you look nice and proper each day. I ask my customer, what do you think about the process development? Many don't know. Many of the customers don't know. I just recently know it. My customer always complains about the traffic, the parking. This intersection is dangerous for children from the school who cross, even though for the dogs. If you feel you vote for the increased traffic in the junction by building this development, a child can be hurt from 3:00 p.m. from the school, they just cross the street the way they want it. Councilmember Casey, Jarrett, Candy, Sandy, you are my good customers. You know the place where I work, and how many years I worked there. Please use your intelligence and wisdom to vote no on this junction development. Please use your intelligence and wisdom to convince the mayor and the fellow council member to vote no. As a proverb says, people who focus on making money pass away too. How you live your life and care for community is what matters.
Thank you.
May God bless you.
Thank you.
May God bless Tacoma, and may God bless United States of America. Thank you.
Marcel, you left your folder. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Reginald J. Ruffin. Been here for, I don't know, over 50 years. I spoke to you before, and I said it was the first time I spoke before the city council, so I'm speaking again. Our culture is community before corporation. We've said this to you before. When we look at, when we look at what's happening now, that's not what's going on. When you heard the gentleman speak earlier, he spoke about corporate interest. He didn't talk about community, how it was going to benefit us in the overall sense. When we look at the simple, it's a simple choice, by the way. It's either we're going to be a community, or we're going to be ruled by corporation. It's as simple as that. This is one of the last pieces of public land that we have, and now you're talking about utilizing it for corporate interest. Individually, when I was listening to him speak, gentification isn't just about displacement of just people, but a culture of people. And when you displace the culture, you affect them, and that's a gentification process. So don't think it's just economic. By the way, we're not against development, just development for the community. How is it going to help the community? How can we use that space for the community? We could use it for a concert, we could use it for a concert space, we could use it for a talking space, we could use it for a lot of things. What we heard was, oh gee, we're going to develop this, and we're going to develop it to the point where, gee, you'll have this small space over here if we think about it. They said they were going to put a hole in the ground, it's going to disrupt the corporate, the co-op with no plan to how they're going to help the co-op. There was nothing clearly said. We've asked for information from the council, and from the things, and we haven't gotten information to make decisions. Corporations, when they originally started, the history of corporations was what? They were supposed to serve the public good. Corporations don't do that any longer. We have now corporations that, when they first started, you remember the 14th Amendment was supposed to protect freed slaves. That's how the corporations started initially. We have the same process going on here when we talk about the gentification process here in this, in this, in this city going on. It's not just about race, it's about the culture displaced being displaced. I can't emphasize that enough. And we have to have representatives, and that's what we're asking all of you to do, represent our interests, not corporate interests, but our interests. That's not to name call, that's not, that's not, that's not to name call, that's not to put anybody down, that's just to point out what we feel is going on. If you're not going to represent our interests, then we need to look at the things that we need to do as far as moving forward as a, as a city. So, bottom line with all this, and the bottom line with all this is that it's a city that's afforded you the opportunity to sit here as city councilman, a one-time city council person that's now mayor. Our culture has afforded you those opportunities. We're saying keep our culture intact, be considered the citizens of the Tacoma Park, and after over 50 years of being here, this kind of thing is not doing it for us. Thank you.
So, my name's Denise Jones, and I live on Maple Avenue. I'm here primarily this evening to talk about, a kind of piggybacking, but about that racial impact statement. The impact statement was amended to specifically address people of color residents' access from Lee and Maple Avenue, and I'd like to know how you came up with the statement. Improvements to circulation paths in the Tacoma Junction will allow for easier and safer pedestrian and bicycle access to the south side of Ethan Allen Avenue, making it the area more accessible for the residents living in the apartment complexes along Maple and Lee avenues to shop, eat, and enjoy the public spaces created by the proposed development. A majority of these residents are people of color. So, as I said, I live on Maple Avenue. It's not easy to cross the junction as it is. With the lay-by, I don't see how it would be any easier at all, but I really want to address the fact that you've adopted this racial equity and economic impact policy, and yet you have not yet, as far as I understand, shared your tool for evaluation of the impacts of this policy? It's a good policy. It was adopted a year ago now, but you came up with this statement out of the blue to support moving forward with this project. Absent sharing your tool and, and the analysis for coming behind that statement, it tells me two things. One is, you're using me, and I don't appreciate it. I don't appreciate it. You are using me and my neighbors to make yourselves look good, and you can't possibly continue to promote that narrative of your progressive stance in Tacoma Park if you don't really use the racial and equity impact policy. You haven't shared it, but you put this statement out with nothing behind it, and you're using me. I don't appreciate it, it's not right. And I want to tell you that, to me, that's a failure of leadership, and I expect to see better out of Tacoma Park. If I can't find that here, I don't see where else I could find it. It's not fair. I, I'm also asking, I'm asking you, I want to know, I want to know, from the council or the city staff, how did you come up with that statement? And where's your tool for evaluation? I want to know that. It's, otherwise, it doesn't make any sense. It's a good policy, but you've got to make it work for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Just so everyone knows, Ms. Berman requested one additional minute, so...
Thank you. My name is Barbara Berman. I live at 652 Kennebec Avenue. I'd like to speak against the current development plan, which I think will be very injurious to everybody in the community, but in favor of sensible and appropriate development of the parking lot at Tacoma Junction. You've heard many opinions on this subject, you're going to hear many more. I'd like to ask you, as the city council, to ignore all the emotion and all the enthusiasm on both sides of the question, and whatever political pressure is being brought to bear on you, and instead use your abilities to visualize the results and assess the consequences of this proposal. And I'd also like to tell you about another proposal that was put before another governing body in Charlottesville, Virginia, 30 years ago, and the results of their decision. 30 years ago, the governing board of UVA Hospital in Charlottesville was redesigning the hospital lobby. Someone suggested that lining the hospital lobby with cobblestones would be picturesque and in line with the history of the area. Now, sitting here, we can all see how ridiculous that proposal was. A hospital lobby must be easy for people in wheelchairs, people on crutches, people on canes, and hospital gurneys with sick patients to navigate. None of those things can happen on an uneven surface of cobblestones. The proposal should have been laughed down and put in the wastepaper bin immediately, but it wasn't. It was passed. The cobblestones were installed, and when I visited the hospital 30 years ago, it was causing all the problems I just mentioned. Everyone who used mobility assistance devices had to make wide detours around it, and patient gurneys had, excuse me, had to be taken around it. The public out, entering the hospital, the outcry was huge. And of course, the hospital jack hammered up the cobblestones and installed linoleum and functional flooring, and that's all very well, but it took a year, and the disruption was awful. It isn't very hard to take up cobblestones and put down functional flooring, but one, once an 18-story building is put up and proves to be just as problematic as people had predicted, who do you think is going to demolish it? We'll be stuck with it and the difficulties it causes forevermore. At one point, that cobblestone proposal was at the same planning stage that the current development proposal is. The governing body heard arguments for it and against it, and decided, in spite of all the common sense and sanity expressed by the people who opposed the cobblestones, to install them anyway. I don't think there are any other 18-story buildings in all of Tacoma Park. One certainly doesn't belong at Tacoma Junction, a beautiful, small community of shops with terrible traffic problems already. If you want the kind of mushrooming development you can get in less intimate communities, go there. Tacoma Park is never going to be a hotbed of commerce. Trying to make that happen will backfire with disastrous consequences. Most development companies create grandiloquent plans that look great and are never intended to be made real. They want to get hired, so they propose a number of impressive but thoroughly impossible things that pay no attention to the actual space available and its parameters. I experienced this when my own small row of townhouses was being converted into condominiums. We had to beat the developers back with a stick to get them to respect our needs and our land. And then there's the lay-by. You know, and all of us know, and some of us are trying to prevent, the inevitable deaths and injuries that will result if it's put in. I think the assumption of the people who support it is that these deaths and injuries will happen to people they don't know. They'll be sorry about them, but the disasters will not affect their lives. What if that weren't so? What if you, as the city council, were told that you could certainly install this very dangerous facility, but you would have to choose members of your own family to be sacrificed? Could you go home and tell your parents, your children, your grandchildren, that you were choosing one of them to be killed or maimed so you could make money?
Thank you, Ms. Berman. Thank you.
Okay.
And I have a list of folks, so if people want to sit down, it goes up to Matt Stimboul, Matt, who's, okay, Matt, you're the last person I have on the list. So, Elizabeth, if you want to go first, yeah. So, if folks want to sit down, you can sit down, I'll call your name.
So, my name's Elizabeth Comfort Cohen. I'm 13, and I live really close to the co-op. And the Tacoma Park co-op has been around for my entire life. I've grown up around thinking that it would be there forever, that I thought I would always have a neighborhood co-op that I could bike to to get any given grocery I needed in the moment. When I was younger, I was so excited to take a trip to the co-op. I would jump out of the car and do a bunch of cartwheels in the wide, wide parking, parking lot. I would cartwheel all the way from as far away as our parking space could be, all the way to the path leading to the co-op. Of course, my brother, who's two years older than me, didn't like that, but that's a different story. I would do this all the time, but of course, I got older and less enthusiastic, but the size of the parking lot was still the same. The co-op also happens to be on my bike, bike commute to school. So, as I go by, as I go past, I have to squeeze onto the small, narrow sidewalk that's next to the parking lot. Not only is it a challenging path to navigate on two wheels, but it is also inconvenient for other pedestrians who are waiting, who are walking the same narrow path. We're already jamming a lot into that space. My bike, busy pedestrians, trucks unloading and loading to the co-op, and public buses, and co-op customers who want to get in and out as quick as they can. Not only is it the sidewalk that's affecting me and my community, but there's also a lot of pollution that would happen with all the trucks that are entering and unloading, and noise that it would create for neighbors nearby. Our country and the world is already affected enough by our cars and our carbon footprint without trucks adding to it all. All I'm asking council members is that you really think long and hard about the effect this project will make on the community and not just the government.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Comfort. I live at Aspen and Lincoln, and I first just want to thank you guys, all of you, men and women, for doing what you do. I don't want to run for government, and you did it, and so thank you. And you have to deal with all of us and all of these decisions, which is a tough job. And, you know, my son's home sick tonight, and she really needs to be resting for Spanish exams tomorrow, and so we got to go. But I just want to say, one, the best news I've heard tonight is that there's going to be mediation between the co-op and NDC. I think that's great. We all have a special relationship with the co-op. I could wax on about the Sambusas, but I won't. But we know you love the co-op too, and I just want to make the point that for lower-income families like ours, we don't need any more restaurants and shops. Like, we just want to go and have a place to have groceries. Because I'm shopping at the groceries, you know, for groceries three times a week, because I'm a terrible... I'm a terrible planner, but I'm hardly, I haven't even been to all of the new places in Tacoma because there's so many, and I can't afford them anyway. So, please, don't do anything that would jeopardize the co-op. But best of all, I wanted to be able to tell the story of living in Tacoma. I've been here 20 years. I had to do my Tacoma Park co-op thing on layaway because we couldn't afford the whole $100 at once. But I want to be able to tell the story that, like, we didn't just have this lead development, which is a dime a dozen. We didn't have this hipster boutique mall thing that we thought we were going to have. We beat it back because we're Tacoma, and we're actually fighting, you know, all the bad guys in the Trump administration. And we're Tacoma. We made the development smaller. We opened it up to the public. We had more green space than we needed to. We made the sidewalk really wide, and like all those jugglers that we were talking about before, we found the balance for our community. Thank you.
I love my neighbors. So, I'm Jackie Moore. I live on Aspen also. I'd like to say good evening to the council members, clerk, manager, and intern. It's time to question motives, intentions, and procedures regarding the push to develop the Tacoma Junction area. Which side are you on? Will you allow corporate dollars to trump community? Which side are you on? Here's another question for you. What would Mayor Sam Abbott do? What would Sammy do? Would he greenlight a project that increases racial inequity in Tacoma Park? Would he be on board with gentrification? Would Sammy, the man who fought hand-in-hand with the citizens of Tacoma Park against a major highway that would have shredded the very fabric of our city, be in favor of a project that will bring more traffic, noise, and fumes, just so that a privileged few have more options for brunch and places to buy artisanal soap? Would Mayor Abbott give the NDC a 99-year lease for the last scrap of undeveloped city land? I don't think he would tolerate the slippery language and the mushy terms put forth by NDC for one second. Would Sammy stick a knife in the heart of the co-op? Rather than pushing through a rushed and flawed plan for the Tacoma Junction, take the time necessary to have meaningful and substantive interaction and dialogue with the citizenry. Make a concerted effort to understand our multifaceted concerns. Spend some quality time pondering, what would Sammy do if he were in your shoes? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Morgan Snyder. I live on Ethan Allen. I'm Ward Two. My wife and I moved to Tacoma Park about six years ago. We wouldn't want to live anywhere else in the whole DC area. We have a two-year-old and a two-month-old, so I'm going to be going home right after this. We're members of the co-op. We shop there frequently. We are pro-co-op, and we're also pro-development. We think these two things are not incompatible. Co-op is run by really good, smart people. They're running a successful business, and they will not just survive. We think they will thrive with this new development alongside it. We support more vibrant and walkable community. There's a lot of really good public space in Tacoma Park. It's the reason why we love the neighborhood and love the parks that we have right around our house. And I think that the best use of this parking lot is not as a parking lot. It is not open space. It is something that should be commercially developed and should be a part of the fabric of our community. One new building doesn't weaken the strength and the cohesion of this community. So, I support the development, and I encourage you to support it as well. Thank you.
Hi, Walter Miles, Lincoln Avenue. I really just want to say, yeah, me too, for the co-op. It's a very important institution to me. I think we really need to address the four points that the co-op has asked us to look at. And I think that the traffic situation and the realignment of roads is going to be immensely difficult. It's really going to take a lot of work, I think. And that's really it. I just, it's, don't lose something this important. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robyn Buck. Some of you know me. And I guess where I'd like to start is, for a number of years, a long number of years, I lived in DC and got very involved with the public land use issue there, the largest tract of land that was available, and worked on that for a long, long time, and still peripherally involved. And what we went through there in guarding that land that actually had been parkland designed by, oh my God, Olmsted, yes, and is slated to be basically obliterated and turned into, oh, just a morass at a very danger, already very dangerous intersection. I just, I remember when I moved to Tacoma Park thinking, phew, I'll never have to deal with anything like that again, not in Tacoma Park. And so, it's been like, in addition to my concerns of being a neighbor right there, somebody who can't get across the street the way it is, there's this huge sadness, too, to think that such a wildly out-of-scale project would be even considered. And I've looked at the renderings that NDC has been, has provided, and they are wildly out of scale. One thing I wish I'd done, since, between seeing them and coming here, was actually ask my neighborhood children what they thought. I mean, they're, basically, they're untruthful. They don't represent what will happen there. And if that is what the council is considering as the reality, then I would really encourage you to ask them to present something that's actually to scale. Ask them to present a model. I don't think they'll want to do that because what they're proposing is inappropriate for the space. And once that land is lost, obviously, it's not going to be reclaimed. I think it's, I think ultimately, if this moves forward, it's a little bit like saying, I want to get to Florida, and, or I want, or I want to go someplace. In any case, it's like, okay, I want to get to Florida, but I got an 80 instead of 81. And I know 81 doesn't go all the way to Florida, but in any case, I, you know, we're headed in the wrong direction. Just because we've moved this far in the wrong direction does not justify continuing to go in the wrong direction.
So, now I have Dara Orenstein, Stephanie Hartman, and Michelle Bollinger.
My name is Dara Orenstein, and I live in Ward Three. This is my first appearance at a city council meeting, first partly because of childcare, which is true for so many people I know, and which is why my son is right now playing in the game room. I speak this evening in opposition to NDC. I do so as a resident, and also, I should note, since assorted credentialed authorities have recently been invoked in this context, as a professor of American Studies at George Washington University. I research the history of capitalism in the United States, and I draw on my expertise when I call this debate over the junction and over the right to the city, as we say in Urban Studies, a textbook example of the political culture of gentrification. If I were to write a scholarly article about this debate, I would title it Four Sentences, and I would open with five statements about which I trust we can all agree. Number one, Tacoma Park is 57% non-white. Number two, home prices are skyrocketing. Number three, the parking lot issue is the last piece of non-designated public land. Number four, there is heated disagreement about what to do with it. Again, a public resource. And number five, in the past year, you, the city's leaders, have pledged to address the question of how racial capitalism has impacted residents of Tacoma Park, and in this instance, you've shown that commitment with, here's my title, Four Sentences. Your racial equity assessment consists of four sentences. I need not remind you, because I know you've attended trainings and met with consultants, thanks to our tax dollars, that typically, a racial equity assessment runs to 20 pages or more. If we look to models in Seattle, St. Paul, and Baltimore, we find a lot of laid work. Here's what needs to happen. Historical research on patterns of land use and property ownership. Statistical surveys on how exactly citizens of color navigate the city, where people live, where they work, when they work, how they socialize. Focus groups on their impressions of the proposed development and on what they hope, especially those most marginalized among them, to see in the city's future. And lastly, targeted outreach to key figures in various neighborhoods, whether clergy, shopkeepers, or youth counselors. Your racial equity assessment shows not a trace of this sort of investigation. No one is viewing a racial equity assessment as a panacea, but at least it can signal an intention to deploy the well-worn term "community" as an imperative and not merely as a cliche. I fear that this is not your intention, and that these paltry four sentences speak volumes about your vision for this city. The only way to prove me wrong, and for this hypothetical article of mine to conclude with a different ending, is for you to terminate your agreement with NDC and to begin again, starting with the kind of intensive appraisal that you promised in your adoption of the language of racial equity.
Thank you.
Yes, it is frustrating and time-consuming to start over, but you must strive to offer more than empty rhetoric. You are a majority-white city council and city administration in a majority-non-white city. You need to show us what democracy looks like.
I'm going to time myself.
You got a timer right there.
Oh, absolutely.
Ms. Hartman, you're going.
Okay, great. My name's Stephanie Hartman. I live on Woodland Avenue near the junction. Even after getting feedback on their concept plan, NDC failed to do what was stipulated in the development agreement, to create a mixed-use development that is community-centered, rich in green space, and pro-local business. Instead, they proposed a big, high-rent building that covers nearly the entire lot and do not appear to pass on their advantageous rent to local businesses. Jane Jacobs wrote in The Death and Life of Great American Cities, "Cities have the capability of providing something for everybody only because and only when they are created by everybody." By ignoring so much of the development agreement and being unresponsive to the concerns raised, NDC has cut much of our community out of the process. This capital-heavy, top-down plan still does not serve multiple needs. Rather than offering significant public space, it offers us only shopping. I realize that this site is challenging and that every plan will disappoint someone, but the city bought this land specifically to ensure that it will be used to benefit our community, to give us a rare measure of control. There is precedent and potential to design something truly innovative and inclusive. It's hard to imagine a private developer offering a plan with any less greenery, less public space, less effort to keep the co-op in business than NDC's. Even the most mercenary, least visionary developer includes a few trees and benches. Development is not synonymous with gentrification. It can energize a place and promote interactions that aren't simply transactional. According to the Project for Public Spaces and Nonprofit, many of the best, most authentic, and enduring destinations in a city, the places that keep locals and tourists coming back and that anchor quality local jobs, were born out of a series of incremental, locally-based improvements. One by one, these interventions build places that were more than the sum of their parts. We, too, can take a lighter, quicker, cheaper approach, building upon some of the ways this site has been used, for food trucks, for truck garden, to develop an inclusive, flexible, bottom-up way. A more grassroots approach could incorporate the needs of multiple stakeholders, so we could get out of this either-or, us versus them, all-or-nothing stalemate. I understand that the city council is impatient for closure. You've been working on this for a long time. But NDC hasn't delivered a mixed-use plan. This development has been bitterly divisive and does not have community buy-in. I don't like being bulldozed by a developer who treats the contract as a disposable wish list. It would be a travesty to turn the last piece of public land in Tacoma Park into a strip mall.
Michelle Bollinger, Mike Royce, and Michael Schuman.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Bollinger, and I've lived in Tacoma Park since 2005. It's my first meeting to the city council and my first time making comments. I as well, childcare, but tried to follow the issue for the past couple, several months, especially since the NDC's plans have come out. I came here tonight to ask you, just like many people have before me, to reconsider drastically your commitments to this project, to scrap the proposals that are on the table, and to start over. I know that might sound frustrating or time-consuming, but all I hear is my neighbors and my community members make one reasonable argument after another about their concerns over traffic, safety, racial equity, and now, I think, issues of gentrification and rising property values and the cost of living in Tacoma Park. I just want to acknowledge Mr. Smith, who's the first person who I've heard, who's an elected official, actually say the word "if" when talking about the development going through. It's the first time, the first time that I've heard that, and it's created this profoundly undemocratic dynamic to these discussions. And I'm saying that for anybody who wonders why things are so intense. It doesn't really match with Tacoma Park to have the kind of divisive and bitter tone to some of these debates, but it's because of this profoundly undemocratic process. Just because you had people participate doesn't mean it was democratic. It's when you discarded the ideas, like for basketball courts, or a park, or other uses of public land that actually benefit everyone, when those ideas were discarded and the parcel was, you know, practically handed over to NDC, that things got incredibly tense. Last night in Tacoma, where I live in Ward Three, we had a meeting themed around gentrification. 50 people came out. We are just get, the tip of the iceberg is the discussions around the cost of living in the city and how your development is contributing to an affluent community that's exclusive and that denies the community members equal access to, you know, to participating in the community. And that's exactly what this project is going to exacerbate, much to our destruction. I do think that issues of racial equity, gentrification, cost of living, these are the reasons why this project needs to be stopped. I don't know how you expect people who are facing rising rents. Have you talked to anybody? My feeling is that people have been shut out of this conversation. My last comment is that I do think that, you know, the idea that we are going to prioritize a place for middle-class white people to go to dinner, or to go to brunch, or to have another expensive shopping option, that is not Tacoma Park. And I'm so disillusioned that people are acting like it is, and I really wish you would reconsider so we can prioritize the values that made this community what it was, because this plan is not it.
My name is Mike Royce, and I live on Park Avenue in Ward One. I am here tonight to speak in support of the Tacoma Junction development. It seems to me as though everyone in the city, on the city council knows where all the stakeholders, NDC, the co-op, nearby business owners, and residents stand in relation to their opinions on the Tacoma Junction development. It also seems to me as though the many arguments for or against the development have been sufficiently voiced to the city council. The traffic studies, if you've looked at the presentation, have, have been presented, the traffic studies have been presented to show that the junction intersection can be made exceedingly more functional than it currently is. I like the majority of NDC's proposed site plan. My greatest concern at this point in the process is to make sure the finished development is functional for both tenants, customers, and visitors. I look forward to the date the city council chooses to vote on the Tacoma Junction development plan. That is where all of you up here, our elected officials, come in. It will be, it will soon be time to show your leadership and make the tough decisions before you. I truly believe this development will revitalize the entire junction area and be greatly beneficial for an overwhelming majority of residents of all colors and of all income levels. The beginnings of this revitalization are already evident, as seen in the newly-opened restaurant, Soul Food DC. I am hopeful that the city council will do the right thing to make the city a more exciting and interesting place to live. One last thing, several speakers, and I'm sure there's some behind me, have used the term racial equity. It would be nice to have that term better defined because I do not personally understand how this development affects racial equity. Thank you.
My name is... Tonight, however, I want to focus on the possibility of a more positive vision of economic development. And if we can get past this divisive proposal, we can move into, I think, a really good possibility of development in Tacoma Junction. The starting principle, I believe, is that public land must be used for public purposes. I want to give you four examples of communities where this has been done. One, to meet the public purpose of providing affordable housing, city land might be used for starting a housing land trust, like the kind that's been operating successfully for a generation in Burlington, Vermont. Two, to provide affordable retail space, city land might be used for a public market and cafes, as is run profitably in Philadelphia and Seattle. Three, to grow new businesses in Tacoma Park, city land might be used for a food incubator, like the one in Athens, Ohio, that has churned out dozens of successful small businesses. Four, to provide a third place for public events, city land might be used for a small auditorium and classroom, as was recently done in Silver Spring. Properly designed, all of these ideas can be self-financing. The key is to deploy creative new kinds of investment to seed these projects. Let me give some examples. Thanks to crowdfunding reforms in Maryland, modest public projects can now solicit stock investment from interested residents and neighbors. If you go to a website called neighborly.com, you will see cities across the United States issuing municipal bonds that are being bought primarily by their residents. And there's no reason the city couldn't begin a very inexpensive program teaching residents how to move tax-deferred savings into local stock and local bonds through self-directed IRA or solo 401K. The bottom line is this: Think creatively about your public assets, as other great visionary cities have. These are all projects that simultaneously unify the public, generate huge new benefits, and don't require you to throw away millions of dollars to an outside private investor. Thank you.
You have Brian Robinson, Gina McNeil, and Catherine Tunis. You're next, Brian.
The politics in this country and locally seems to be more and more resembling the movie Idiocracy. And in the movie Idiocracy, everyone drinks a form of Gatorade because it contains electrolytes, but nobody knows why electrolytes are supposed to be good for them. And the term progressive seems to be used in the same way in Tacoma Park. People have this muscle memory of, oh, progressive urban development. But what they really mean by progressive is upscale. And they don't really have any conception of what's going on in actual progressive urban development. So you have other communities with other motives that are actually doing creative things, and I don't see that being done anywhere in Montgomery County. In fact, I would say Montgomery County is going far in the opposite direction. And I wish I could have made a written statement, because I would have a bunch of, but unfortunately, the format of every city council meeting does not allow for interactive questions, even for the expert. I just saw the expert out there glad-handing someone from the developers, saying, "Oh, good, you gave a positive recommendation. We're so glad." You know, there's nothing progressive about College Park. And I stopped, I attended the University of Maryland Architecture School, and I changed schools because I saw what they were doing at College Park. And the deans of that school supported it. And for them to joke about the fact the dean of an architecture school can't afford to live in our community, this hurts businesses and residents. I work in a nonprofit arts center in Tacoma Park. We can't retain volunteer staff because our volunteers can't afford to live here anymore. And then my friends and, friends and former neighbors of mine and people I know, they joke about it because they don't live here anymore, and they don't have a passion for Tacoma Park. They just see it as, oh, that's that community that used to be affordable, but nobody, they don't care about it anymore. They view it as a joke that we think we're so progressive. They're like, nobody can afford to live there. It's an exclusive little enclave of yuppies. That's the way they see it, okay? Now, there's a whole host of serious problems with this. I'm not against development. I think sustainable development can be done on this site. I think, you need to see it like a lump of clay. If you push it down and cover the whole site with concrete, then you have a big box store that looks like a Walmart, okay? I think if you had things like affordable housing, even if it was just artist's lofts, if you had set-asides for locally-owned businesses, that would be nice.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Gina McNeil, and I've lived in Tacoma Park for, well, since 1992. And my comment has to do with the recently updated racial equity statement on the proposed development at Tacoma Junction. And I just want to say upfront that I have stayed completely out of this discussion. I have preferred to leave it to the residents, including a lot of friends of mine who live closest to that area, and the city, you guys, to decide the fate of the junction. Because I can see pros and cons to the proposed development, and so I have not taken a side in the fight for or against the proposal. However, I'm upset about the racial equity statement. I was so proud last year when this council, when you guys, announced your intention to apply a racial equity lens to all of your decisions. Having read the statement about the junction proposal, though, I am disappointed to see that it doesn't address your stated standard at all. Your standard is to reverse, and I'm quoting, "reverse racial disparity trends, dismantle institutional racism, and ensure that outcomes and opportunities for all people are no longer determined by race." So I'd like to see a much better justification than improvement in circulation paths. I don't see how that's relevant to those other stated goals. I want the city to stand by its promise to evaluate its decisions based on racial equity outcomes. You have not done a thorough job at all so far with this. If this is the best you can do, and I don't think it's the best that Tacoma Park can do, absolutely not, then this proposal doesn't meet your own stated racial equity goals. And so I don't understand why have them if you're not going to use them in earnest.
Hi, I'm Catherine Tunis, and I have comments on three non-voting items tonight, two of which have absolutely nothing to do with the junction. First of all, I would like to thank our police and fire officials for coming out and helping on Monday night when we had the tragedy on Larch Avenue where one of my neighbor's houses was completely destroyed. I wish they had gotten there faster, but that's a serious tragedy. And we have set up a funding mechanism through Adventist Community Services where people can donate if they would like to help the family. It is tax-deductible. You can send a check to Adventist Community Services of Greater Washington at 501 Sligo Avenue, or you can donate on their website with a credit card. Please make sure that you note that this is for the Larch Avenue fire if you do make a donation, so that it will go directly to the family. Secondly, I am here to formally request that the council vote per Resolution 2015-32, Paragraph 11, to address the Larch Avenue sidewalk. I am very concerned that this process was not handled properly. There are people who are, have told me that they were going to vote against the sidewalk and yet have been told that they were for it. The public works said that they were for it. There were six houses where the sidewalk will be put in front of. Four of them are vehemently opposed. We all feel as if we're being run over by a truck. There are people talking about packing up and moving because they feel so disrespected. I just do not feel that it's appropriate for the city to hire somebody on staff to tell people that their children are going to die unless there are sidewalks everywhere, which is not true. And also, I think it is appalling that we get the word on Monday of what the vote is, and already there is markings on the street of where they're going to cut up people's front yards. That tells me that you are not following the policy in Paragraph 13 that says that construction will be done when funding is available, per all the other sidewalks that have been approved, pre-approved. Something is very smelly here, and I would like council to put a stop to it until we can make sure that this was done properly, which it hasn't. The third item I would like to address in the last 30 seconds I have is about the junction. And I will say that I agree with the other comments that people have made. However, being the person who typically speaks for the trees, I would tell you to be very, very careful about that wooded area in the back. It cannot handle a path going through it. Terry will probably remember the tragedies that we had in Sligo Creek Parkway, along Sligo Creek Parkway, when they put the Hiker Parker Trail in. Everyone then said, "You have a path there. We have to cut down every tree that could possibly fall on that path." Please do not love the trees to death. Please leave them alone and let them grow.
Thank you, Ms. Tunis.
And I'd be happy to volunteer to help you with that.
Can we have Jessica Heppen, Kelly Gibson, Roger Schlegel?
My name's Jessica Heppen. I live at 7200 Central Avenue in Ward 2 with my husband Caesar Ibanez and our two children. We've lived there for 14 years. I'm strongly in favor, back to the junction, of moving forward with the site plans that the city has commissioned. I truly appreciate the city council's thoughtful process, which has been long and has involved extensive opportunity for public input. There are many reasons that we're excited about the development plans at Tacoma Junction. We look forward to a revitalized junction that brings more foot traffic to all of the businesses in the junction area, more jobs, and a greater tax base to the city that can be used to provide more services to the community. We're excited about having a vibrant location to meet up with friends and family, with public outdoor space, and an anchor restaurant and other amenities that is walkable from nearly everywhere. As you well know, engagement in this process has been up and down over the past four years. Because we're at a pivotal point, not surprisingly, engagement is up. And in the past month, I've seen a dramatic uptick in the number and variety of voices expressed on social media and local listservs that support moving forward with the NDC plans. So many residents have pointed out to the small but loud opposition that environmental and economic benefits of the development in high-density areas. Thoughtful, knowledgeable residents have also pointed out practical realities. Calls for smaller development do not necessarily translate into financeable ideas. The scale of the development at the junction needs to be in line with Tacoma Park character, yes, absolutely, and needs to be economically viable. As one very informed resident put it on a local listserv, "Construction costs are rising. The more this process is slowed by detractors focused on obstructing rather than productive logistical planning, the less financially feasible it may become." This concern that the time is now is construed as impatience, but it's actually the very real recognition that this opportunity to do something with that lot can be squandered. Supporting this development is a progressive stance. It's good for Tacoma Park's long-term economic viability and tax base, includes significant environmental improvement with the excavation of the lot and lead building, and includes real attention to pedestrian and bike accessibility and safety. We are not concerned about the lay-by. We understand from the traffic study that, in reality, it will be empty most of the time. We're also confident with this project on the near horizon. We will finally get the SHA to improve the intersection, which will have a positive impact on all residents. We understand that there are many details to work out, but these can't be addressed until there's forward movement on the site plans. Thank you again, council members and Mayor Stewart, for sticking to your vision for the junction. We continue to support it.
Hi, I'm Kelly Gibson. I live at 7314 Trescott Avenue in Ward 2. This is not my first time in front of the council. I was here last week as well. Last week, I said I spoke on behalf of a crew of supporters. I do the same tonight. There, it was a busy week. As Mayor Stewart said, there was a lot of voices. As Jessica just said, it hasn't been pleasant around. In fact, my comments last week were scrutinized on some of those listserv comments, that I didn't have enough specificity in my support and that my support was maybe a little weak. So I'm happy to be more clear. I support the junction. I support this site plan by NDC because I love the opportunity of walking to someplace and supporting local community with my family, to meet up with neighbors and family, as Jessica said. I understand that there is a desire for community space. Our neighborhood in Ward 2 has three playgrounds surrounding it, of which we meet in often. What we don't have is a place to walk to, to support local business, to shop at the co-op, to get a bite to eat, in both sides of the junction, the one that is undeveloped and the one that is currently developed. What is coming out of the co-op, I'm a member of the co-op, I have been for 10 years. I've always been a good neighbor to the co-op. Right now, I feel they're not a good neighbor to me. They're a business. They deserve to strive, but they shouldn't be the only business that strives in that area. This site plan has been thoughtfully developed by you, the council. I'm grateful for that over the last handful of years. And I'm fearful, like I said last week, that if there's a no vote on this, that we have many, many years in front of us where we have a heat island of concrete and nothing that contributes to the neighborhood. So I would like to list for the record the people that I'm speaking on behalf of. Allison McDonald on Flower Avenue, Janet and Jeffrey Maxx on Central Avenue, Sam and Casey Brown on Central Avenue, Jenny Evans-Mear on Hilton Avenue, Meg Holland and Tucker McDonald on Davis Avenue, Leah Salza and Nathan Goldstein on Flower Avenue, Ian and Beth on Minter Avenue, and my husband Caleb Gibson on Trescott Avenue. Thanks very much for the time.
Hi, I'm Roger Schlegel, 6512 Allegheny Avenue, Ward 3. And I appreciated the opportunity to meet with Mayor Stewart and Councilmember Costiuk and Councilmember Kovar this afternoon. Just for the record, I have shared with all of you that taking this detailed, matrix-style assessment from a couple weeks ago that I've been updating with consultation with others, I've turned it into this list of unresolved issues that certainly appear to me to be unresolved with the NDC site plan. It's divided into categories: Their overall presentation, aesthetics, historic character and scale, accommodation of the TPSS co-op, sustainability, outdoor public space, promoting alternative modes of transportation, enhanced streetscape, parking, retail and commercial destination with options for local community, traffic impacts, emergency vehicle responsiveness, and racial equity. And I'm really not trying to make a laundry list. I was conceiving this as a punch list of things that would be helpful for you and for staff to guide your thinking as you decide how to approach NDC if you want to continue working with them. It turned out to be 70 items, so I apologize for that, but it's not my fault. I'm just trying to do the best analysis I can. I don't, as I said this afternoon, I'm actually not a pessimist. There's a lot of conflict in the community, but I think that people are finally making their views clear. And there's got to be a way that NDC, as a business, if they want to stay involved, that they have room to give. And to speak to one area where I really think they must, must give, it's on that public space. When I was on the task force and we did all the outreach, one of my colleagues in that was Megan Gallagher. I saw her at the pop-up, and I said, "Megan, you remember when we did the outreach, community outreach, all those different meetings we did? What would you have guessed at this point in time we would be seeing if a design came forward and we were redoing something with this space? What percentage would be public space?" She said, she didn't hesitate, she said, "At least 50%." I really think that from an equity standpoint, from a community standpoint, as so many have said, we've got to recognize that this is the only flat piece of property in a commercial district that wouldn't have to be shut down by the police to hold a true public gathering. And that's what we're trying to do, bring young and old together in an enhanced public space suitable for public gathering. She said, she didn't hesitate, she said, "At least 50%." I really think that from an equity standpoint, from a community standpoint, as so many have said, we've got to recognize that this is the only flat piece of property in a commercial district that wouldn't have to be shut down by the police to hold a true public gathering. And that's what we're trying to do, bring young and old together in an enhanced public space suitable for public gatherings. So I can talk more about that at another time, but thank you.
Can I have Adam Frank, Ben Repel, Joseph Gilde, and Matt? I can't read Matt's last name, it begins with an S. Is Matt still here? Yes, he is. Adam, yeah.
My name's Adam Frank. I'm in Ward Two, and I am a member of the Board of Representatives of TPSS Co-op. Mayor Stewart and council members, we want to thank Mayor Stewart for inviting co-op representatives to meet last week to discuss some of the issues that we all face in connection with redevelopment of the city lot next to the co-op. We also thank councilmembers Dabala and Kostik and city staff for taking the time to participate in that meeting. In particular, Mayor Stewart, thank you for the offer to submit to the council a recommendation that the city fund a mediation process in an effort to help resolve some of these issues. I'm happy to say that the co-op board supports and has agreed to participate in a mediation process. It is the board's strong belief that this process will have the best chance for success if it includes NDC, the city, and the co-op. We understand, based on our discussion last week, that you have reservations about the city's participation and need to consult with your council in this regard. If the city does not participate as a mediation party, we ask that the city representatives participate in the role of observers so that there is transparency with respect to the discussions among the parties. Also, we assume that the parties will select a mediator that is acceptable to all. We strongly urge that any mediator selected by the parties have no familiarity with the project and preferably be chosen from a jurisdiction with no ties to Tacoma Park. We think this is the best way to ensure the impartiality of any chosen mediator. Thank you again for your commitment to a mediation process, and we hope that this effort can lead to consensus issues that have been so difficult to address. We will reach out to Adrian Washington of NDC to discuss how to move forward with this process. We also want to let the council know that even before the concept plan was first presented in April, the co-op hired consultants to help it evaluate the project and has hired more experts since then. We know we face difficult design and operational challenges and want to assure the council that we have spent an extraordinary amount of time and invested significant co-op resources in our effort to resolve these complex issues. As we did last week, we will continue to bring forward potential solutions for your consideration and assure you that we are doing everything in our power to both protect the co-op's viability and support the citywide interest in a thriving Tacoma Junction. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frank. Is Ben still here? Did Ben have to leave? All right, Ben's gone. Joseph Gilde? Are you Elizabeth?
Yes.
Okay. Joseph said he was speaking on behalf of you, so.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Purwin. I live at 48 Jefferson Avenue, and I've been a resident of Tacoma Park for almost 30 years. We paved paradise to put up a parking lot. Now let's unpave it and return to paradise. What this project calls for is a beautiful public space for gathering, hanging out for community. Tacoma Park is a beautiful city. What I would love to see is like a village green, a town center, a piazza with benches and places to sit and commune, to sit and read a book, to be outside, like a smaller Dupont Circle. I'm fine with a few commercial spaces surrounding this open area, like a café or an inexpensive indoor/outdoor bar or restaurant, but that there are places to go that you do not have to spend money, that you can just be and enjoy being outdoors and being with your fellow Tacoma Parkians, establishments that add to the co-op and the outdoor nature of the space. I'm not against reasonable commercial development. I love that Republic and the Trattoria and Tacoma Bevco came to Tacoma Park, and I love all our cute shops, and I frequent them. We have everything we need already. We do not need another large commercial area. And aesthetically, this plan is, it's just ugly. It's just awful. I don't like it. It takes up the whole space. Let's use some imagination and create something that's a vision for other communities, not a replica. We also need a place where the uniquely Tacoma Halloween Parade can organize itself according to age groups before proceeding down Carroll Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, you're up.
Hi, my name is Matthew Strube, and I live on Manor Circle. This is my first time speaking before the council. I'm here to share my thoughts on the recent racial equity impact assessment relating to the Tacoma Junction Development Plan. At first, I thought what was provided was a summary of a much more detailed assessment. I told myself that there must be a reference or link somewhere where the city has archived the detailed analysis on how this development decision would impact the socio-economic diverse community and how the city would meet the spirit of their self-stated goal of applying a racial equity lens to all decisions across the government and to build an inclusive, equitable community for all residents. But all I found were four sentences. I find those four sentences troubling. Active development does traditionally impact the makeup of communities by shifting how money moves from circulating within a community to flowing out of a community, from people to corporations. Considering that these same corporations have profited off the historic and continued economic marginalization of people of color, such a change in the flow of money will most likely negatively impact our racially diverse community. I also feel that we are missing a major opportunity here. Instead of thinking how this development plan would negatively impact racial equity, we should instead be asking what kind of development plan would provide a positive impact? What plan can support, reinforce, and rebuild the racial minorities that have been systemically oppressed? What do the 57% think would help them close the economic gap? What do the 139 businesses think would be the best to increase the number of minority-owned businesses in Tacoma Park to 150, to 200? The point I want to make is that we have a choice on which direction we want to go as a community. Do we want to be pro-development, pro-business, pro-corporation? To be sure, most people will likely experience some economic stimulus in the first few years after the development is complete. However, that stimulus over time will disproportionately benefit white people, which will in turn change the makeup of Tacoma Park to a more homogeneous community. Or do we choose to forego immediate gratification and preserve the longstanding diverse ethos of Tacoma Park for the coming generations? Do we work to use our position of power to help those without power? We have a choice, and we should be transparent about why we are making that choice. We have a choice, and we should choose wisely. And my daughter really wants a park instead of a parking lot. Thank you.
All right. I have Erin O'Brien, Cynthia Morrell, Burn Kelly, and Barbara Warner.
Hi, I'm Erin O'Brien. I live on Ethan Allen Avenue. Been there for about three years, and I spoke back in October representing about 23 families who are my neighbors who both support the co-op and the development. And I started with a position that I think the co-op and the development can both be successful, and I supported them both. But today, I'm here to express concern over the co-op slash the Community Vision's actions. To me, actions speak louder than words, and their actions are showing that they are not operating in good faith to resolve problems. And they've also been trying to actively undermine the development and kill it completely. So, for example, they deny being anti-development all the time, but they put forth shifting and even contradicting arguments. For example, they've complained about not enough parking and then there being too much parking. They met with the State Highway Administration and directly asked about how to slow down or stop the traffic study, and coincidentally, NDC's study was delayed by the SHA for several weeks. At the pop-up, I saw a large man from the Community Vision group standing above a city employee and screaming at her. It was very inappropriate. It did not seem like they were trying to reach a compromise or have a reasonable discussion. And also, at the pop-up, I'm sure a lot of people saw the picture, their co-opted the last words of a black man while he was being murdered to protest it. They misled the council and the community by getting petition signatures without disclosing what the petition was. I was personally asked to sign here to save the co-op. They also got a lot of signatures from out-of-towners. And they accidentally sent a long email exchange to a local listserv which shows they're conniving to kill this at all costs, including exploiting the racial equity argument and disrespecting community members and council members. They've had two public meetings that they've emailed all the listservs about. I attended one of them, and at both the meetings, the tone was not about compromise or finding solutions. The tone was, "What can we do to stop this, to delay this?" And at the most recent meeting, they talked specifically about recalling Kate and Casey, and they talked about strategies to get NDC to walk away by continuing to lay this and to kill it. So I know that NDC has worked on and addressed many concerns, and there are valid concerns that remain, but I'm a little bit concerned about what's going to happen next. I know the co-op recently accepted mediation, which could be a good thing, but they're not showing that they're acting in good faith and working towards a solution, so I'm not optimistic. Young families in Tacoma Park want this. My other neighbors who are nearing retirement age, they want this too. A lot of them can't make these meetings. Just remember, loudest voices aren't the most representative. It's a privilege to be able to have the time to come here, and the most privileged people are coming here to talk to you. Don't let perfect be the enemy of good.
I'm sorry, please stop. Please, just let Ms. O'Brien stop.
Okay.
Just wrap it up, Ms. O'Brien, three seconds.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you for your time. I'll end on that note. Thank you.
Cynthia, you're up.
Thank you, Cynthia Mariel. What does it mean for the Tacoma Park community when elected officials choose not to act for the public good? What does it mean when elected officials choose to lease public land, emphasis, public land, in Tacoma Park to a private developer, yet not all residents will be able to enjoy this public land? What does it mean when a council member says that residents who cannot afford to frequent these restaurants or shops can simply window shop? What does it mean when elected officials vote to enact a racial equity resolution, yet the stated equity impact assessment for the proposed development does not even appear credible to the general public, yet on the council, we have a mayor and a council member who have credentials in research? As I talk to people about the proposed junction development, people ask, "Why is the mayor so determined to push this development plan through?" I don't have an answer. Do you? People ask, "Why is input from Tacoma Park residents being ignored, particularly when there's so many unresolved issues between the developer and the agreement specifics?" Why is it acceptable that the mayor and the city council members do not meet with a group of junction businesses until two days ago, when this goal of this project is economic development for local businesses at the junction? The city has been planning this project for more than five years. The mayor and city council are about to vote. It's not acceptable when the mayor's explanation is that the meeting did not take place sooner because the assumption was the Old Town Business Association would take on this responsibility. Given this major blender of outreach, what other key stakeholders have not been consulted? Councilmember Kovar, in his 2017 campaign narrative, identified priorities that are critical to elected leaders. Priorities such as making sure economic growth and development projects are compatible with our neighborhoods, promoting inclusiveness so everyone can participate, keeping Tacoma Park affordable. These are qualities we need to see in our leaders. These are qualities that you need to exhibit now and in the future. These qualities need to be exhibited around voting on the junction. If not, then the title of elected leader is not deserving of you and is below the bar of the Tacoma Park community.
Thank you, Ms. Morrell. Thank you.
Camera, get that? No, that's for the camera.
Mr. Kelly, can you please start?
Thanks. My name is Burn Kelly. I actually taught at Catholic University. I taught to students in the School of Architecture. Why? Because I'm a landscape architect and a site planner. And on another note, just previous last week, the thing that came up about JNA and the sale of it and the trade of land, I would tell the council to stop looking at that plan for a minute and listen to me, and that we should not go forward with fixing the properties that are on either people's side without negotiating. We need to just, we should not just kowtow and say, "Oh, we'll fix that for you." That's not the art of the deal. We should say, "Wait a minute. You want to do what? Bring 700 kids in here? I mean, 350 kids, 700 trips to JNA every day and be open at night? You guys need to rethink that one." But let's go back to the junction. A woman who just spoke was a little mixed up on her facts. I have, in 2015, created a plan. And now, in 2018, I've created a new plan because I've listened to everybody's parties, and I'm looking for the compromise. I'm looking for what will make NDC able to develop something that the community wants and be whole. It's called, "How do we perfect a plan?" You will notice in this plan that Johnny's, which NDC wisely put a contract in with him to buy, enables us to move the development over to the west. We, the city, should buy that. NDC should not increase its plan to 50,000 square feet. They should beholden to what the council passed in October of 34,000 feet. What you see is a 17,000-foot footprint, and you will see between the co-op and the new building, two things. A huge 40-by-100-foot public space where Roger Schlegel said, "I wish we had a place we could have an outdoor ball and dance." What Liz Purman just said. We want a good space, and we can afford that space by moving the project to the west. You see, there's a route for trucks to come in the back, day and night, the box trucks. And yes, a semi can lay by Spring Mill Bakery and back into that. I did the measurements. Everything there is to scale. It's a 30-to-35-foot tall building, and it has a big expansion for the co-op. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Barbara Warner, is she still here?
Good evening to the mayor and to all the council members. I'm a fairly recent Tacoma resident, but I'm familiar with the area. I spoke about four or five months ago when you had one of your early presentations of the, this particular developer's vision, which is probably the most unimaginative thing I have ever seen. There is a worldwide organization called the United Cities and Local Governments. It has 180 members, as many as in the UN. They meet yearly and discuss wonderful ways to improve cities and local governments. And they also focus on public land and green spaces and development and community. I recommend all of you to go to their website and get some ideas. Again, at the time I spoke to you a few months ago, what struck me was that you put out an RFP. And the RFP, Request for Proposals, delineated what you were looking for in a developer. And the developer that you have chosen, in their proposal, their proposal was a far cry from what the RFP was requesting. And so, to me, either they fix it and meet the demands of the RFP, or we open up the floor. Why not even open it up, period, to get some really amazing ideas? Open it up to architecture? the vision that makes us all want to live here is very disparaging and very upsetting. So, bottom line, it's the most unimaginative thing I've ever seen. And, I mean, honestly, every city, as somebody mentioned Ohio and Philadelphia and Seattle, has so many wonderful ideas. Go for it. I mean, we can live with a parking lot for a little longer to make sure that whatever replaces it is sustainable and beautiful. And that will bring people to come, and that will bring money into Tacoma Park because people will come and visit and buy their ice cream and so forth. But to continue with what you have now is ridiculous. They lied. What the RFP, they didn't fill the RFP. So, void contract.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are all the names I have on the list. Are there any other people who would like to speak?
It's really handy, so just, you know, you don't have to stoop if you're tall, and you can raise it if you're short. I'm Mark Sherman. I live on Hancock Avenue. I want to speak to the crosswalk signal at Carroll and Philadelphia. There's actually two signals, one to cross Carroll and the other to cross Philadelphia. Until a few weeks ago, the way those signals worked is that all traffic was stopped for a period of time that allowed people to cross either street or both streets at once, in what is sometimes called a barn walk. You had to wait until that interval arrived, but once it arrived, you were free to cross, and all traffic was stopped in all directions. It worked great. It was not broken. It didn't need fixing. But a few weeks ago, I was changed. I started sending emails. I started making phone calls. I spoke to a transportation engineer at the county. And what we have now is 10 seconds during which you can cross Philadelphia and be assured that a car coming from behind you, if you're heading towards Old Town, won't be coming up behind you in order to turn right on Philadelphia on its way to Silver Spring. 10 seconds. When those 10 seconds expire, the white illuminated walk signal stays lit, giving you the impression that you're still free to cross that street. But in fact, at that moment, the cars that have been waiting to turn right on Philadelphia are now free to turn right. And so, you're put at risk in a way that is counterintuitive. Because when you're crossing Carroll at Grant and the crosswalk signal comes on, you are protected for the entire duration of that signal, for the entire portion that it's white and for the portion that is called the flashing red, don't walk countdown. That entire span, you're protected. No traffic is moving. And so, to have a completely different kind of arrangement there is inviting people to essentially jaywalk, because there's cars that are going to try to make that turn while you're trying to cross the street. So it works only for those who are waiting at that sidewalk to cross, and they may be able to get across in those first 10 seconds. But if you arrive after that moment, you're in trouble, because now you're duking it out with the traffic. And if you're heading towards Old Town, those cars are coming from behind you. You can't even see them. Even if you turn, you might not be able to see them, because the other cars are waiting at the light, trying to get into Old Town. So it's a bad situation. It wasn't broken. It was just fine. Please restore the barn walk, and please make that part of your determinations on the larger Tacoma Junction issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sierra Fitzpatrick. I grew up just about two blocks from downtown Bethesda. And when I was a kid, growing up in the 80s, Bethesda was a nice place to live. It was walkable, drivable, affordable for my family. It had many one- and two-story buildings. It was human-scaled. And I'm sure you know where I'm going with this. I don't like to go to Bethesda anymore. I can't afford it. I don't belong there. I've lived here in Tacoma Park on and off for over nine years, and I keep coming back here, because this is one of the only places I've lived in the world that actually comes close to feeling like a community. And because Tacoma Parkers don't just talk about their values, they live them. These are people accustomed to participating in their democracy on a daily basis, who are willing to push the boundaries that need to be pushed. All of this is to say that when I look at what the city and NDC want to build on this public land in my home, I'm heartbroken. And I'm beginning to see how easily we could lose so much of what we love about this place. I'm reminded of the plaque on the wall outside this auditorium that honors our former mayor, Sam Abbott. It quotes him as saying, if we can't do it in Tacoma Park, there's no hope for the nation. Even if others aren't doing it, we can. So for me, the tragedy of the story of the junction is that we have the tools to do something meaningful with this land, where others might go with business as usual. The Tacoma Park I know has the vision and the imagination to use this unique opportunity to much greater potential. And like every great place to live, Tacoma Park also has problems. So I'm asking myself, what is the problem that NDC's plan is designed to solve? I can tell you right now, a problem we do not have is not enough places to go out to eat and shop. I don't need any more $5 coffees or $12 cocktails. Do we care about making real strides in affordable housing? Are we being honest with ourselves about how this development will exacerbate skyrocketing home prices in our town? Are we committed to intentionally and purposefully improving racial and economic equity? Do we genuinely understand and value the transformative power of meaningful public space? Do we want more places where low-income residents are welcome without requiring them to spend money? Or are we resigned to further excluding them? Window shopping, by the way, does not count. If we can all agree that gentrification is a widespread problem, what is stopping us from doing what we can here in Tacoma Park to slow or even turn that tide? It's no small task, but what we do here matters if we are really thinking globally, acting locally. Tacoma Park didn't get to be the way it is by accident, and it won't stay what it is without hard work. This too can disappear. We strangely seem to be in a hurry to just get something done, and as a result, we're throwing up our hands. And that's the least Tacoma Park thing I've ever heard.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick.
Hi, my name is Karen Elrich, and I was one of the founding members of the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Food Co-op. And I remember moving it into Tacoma Park from Silver Spring. And I remember why we told, why we pushed our government to buy that piece of property next to the co-op. It was to stop development like this. And that was the history of the purchase of that piece of property. We had also made an agreement with the co-op, with our community members, that we would not do deliveries down Sycamore. And with the proposals that I've seen, that we're going to have to break that, to be able to get deliveries into the co-op. So I just wanted to give that little bit of history of why we bought that piece of property and what you have done with the historical reason of why it was bought and why it became public land. It wasn't meant to make a big development. It was meant to be saved for us, the people of Tacoma Park, not to buy another breakfast or another piece of jewelry. So please remember that. Thanks.
I'm Lorraine Pierceall of Historic Tacoma, and I'm here to say that Historic Tacoma does not support the scale and massing of what we're seeing here with this NDC project and are very concerned about its compatibility with our low-scale historic district. We also have concerns about placing a 50,000-square-foot or greater commercial building at the location of our most vulnerable intersection. We will share traffic and reconfiguration concerns later. Speaking to Mr. Cronrath's analysis, it is important to understand what it is and what it isn't. It is an isolated architectural analysis of the proposed project. It is also fully inadequate in determining the central question of compatibility with the inserting of a massive urban structure within our low-scale, small-town, commercial historic district. Such a determination must consider existing context of the district, which this analysis, by its own admission, does not. This will be done by our Historic Preservation Commission, certainly not by Mr. Cronrath. I think some people may be a little confused by that. Mr. Cronrath starts with an interesting caveat in the beginning of his review with the phrase, if one accepts the proposal as a plausible future. I don't accept it as a plausible future. That is quite a caveat. It sidesteps this development proposal as drastically character-changing, as we would phrase it, or as Bethesda-ification or gentrification, as others refer to it. And it will be a serious issue for review by the HPC. With respect to a new building, compatibility of scale and massing is critical. Preserving character is critical. The HPC has the authority to downsize this project if it believes that it is currently not compatible with our district, as we feel it is not. Also remember that we are working with rosy views of artistic renderings that are not to scale. Renderings are meant to sell an idea. I remind you how the city relied upon such artistic renderings for the community center, rather than truthful elevations, which we do not now have. And the contrast between what was expected and delivered was really quite shocking. So we strongly advise the city to direct NDC to go to the HPC for several preliminary consultations right away.
Thank you, Ms. Pierceall. Thank you.
These are voluntary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clay Calsa from Conway Avenue, Ward 2. Sorry. Yes, whose is this? Longtime listener and repeat offender for commenting way too late into the evening. I've been disappointed with the at-times extreme arguments and sometimes mean-spirited communications that are coming out of the debate about the Tacoma Junction redevelopment project. The word divisive is what I'm feeling most, and I heard it many times tonight. I want redevelopment of the junction to come as a community-building project and not one leaving aside a winner and a loser. For whatever development vision you have of the specific space, I hope it includes a high priority on maintaining and strengthening our community. A few other neighbors and I found common ground with these sentiments and have composed a letter to the city council. We are asking the council to generate more community support for this project as a path forward to building community and not just a development. Here's the letter. Dear Kate, Casey, Jarrett, Cindy, Talisha, Peter, and Terry, we, the undersigned, love Tacoma Park, as we know you do, and want the best for it. We are dismayed that the development process for the Tacoma Junction has become so divisive. Therefore, we request that the council take appropriate steps to meaningfully broaden community support before voting on a resolution on the site design. Broad community support is a collection of expressions by affected individuals and groups, including businesses, in support of the project, and there may be broad community support even if some individuals or groups object to the project. Disagreements about local projects are inevitable, have happened before in Tacoma Park, and will undoubtedly occur in the future. We also recognize that the council-led process, including public participation, has already consumed disproportionate time and resources. The incentives to move forward expeditiously are strong, especially given the council has other priorities. However, the current degree of conflict around this project is incompatible with the deeply held community values of inclusion, respectful engagement, and trust. We recognize the community members themselves have an important role to play in maintaining these values, even as they seek to reconcile their respective interests. Thank you all for your service and consideration of the above request. So that's the letter. We just barely organized ourselves a week ago and started circulating. We have collected 50 signatures. I invite others to join in the effort to find a middle way. Sign the letter. Support our city council in an effort to have a community-building project, not a community-dividing project. Personally, I want to see a project at the junction cross the finish line, but I just hope the council will bring more of the community into the winner's circle. As a PS, I'm glad to hear of the city-funded mediation process and the co-op's agreement to participate. It's important to define the parameters and expectations of such a process, and I second Adam Frank's comments that ask the city to be a player in that mediation, or at least be an observer. This news of mediation appears to be one step in generating broader community support. Keep on moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? All right, seeing none, we will now move on to council comments. Any council comments? Mr. Siemens.
Thank you. Ms. Tunis mentioned it earlier, but I would like to repeat the appeal to the community for fundraising for the victims of the fire on Larch Avenue, and just like to reiterate how to make a donation. Adventist Community Services is collecting donations. You can mail a check to Adventist Community Services at 501 Sligo Avenue, Silver Spring, Maryland, ZIP Code 20910. I believe they also have a GoFundMe page out there, but I don't know the particulars about that. And just for clarification, I will tell you that I'm on the Board of Directors of Adventist Community Services. That's all for tonight. Thank you. I think enough people have said enough things. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Siemens?
Okay, so I have more.
Councilwoman Zersey? Got the yeses.
I will be brief. I just want to encourage folks to please come out to the Crossroads Farmers Market. That is on Wednesdays on Ann Street on March 30th at 11:00. During the Farmers Market, I will be out there just having lunch, and then I think there will be quite a few 5th graders there, too, so I'm excited. That should be fun. So definitely, if you are working from home, or you're just at home, and you're like, what should I do on a Wednesday afternoon? Come to the Farmers Market. Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith?
I want to let my colleagues know that tomorrow evening is the Montgomery Chapter MML meeting. The town of Poolsville will be hosting us. Dinner will be served at 6:15. This is an important meeting, because new officers will be elected for the chapter. The business meeting will start at 6:30 tomorrow. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kostic?
Thank you, and I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and giving public comments. I also want to invite people to our next community coffee event, which will be on June 9th. It's a Saturday at 4:00 PM at Sligo Mill Overlook Park. This is an opportunity to come out and meet and talk. It should be pretty informal. There isn't a lot of seating at Sligo Mill Park, so I expect it to be pretty informal, just sort of people standing around and talking. But it's a chance to come out and see one of the newest parks, the newest park, I believe, in Tacoma Park, and bring your kids or dogs along as well. I also want to report on a couple of things, a couple of meetings I've had recently with the Council of Governments. Last week, I chaired the Access for All Committee, which is a transportation planning board committee focused on serving underrepresented groups in the transportation planning process. And we had a really interesting discussion regarding the long-range transportation plan for the entire metropolitan region, and looked at priorities such as bringing jobs and housing closer together, improving walkability and bikeability to transit, working on bus rapid transit, and a variety of other things. So that was a great discussion, and what it was, was a forum that we had, that has been happening throughout the region, that we did at the Access for All Committee, but it's also a forum that's open to any member of the public, and I encourage you to take advantage of the forum that will be online. It will be on June 6th, and it's an opportunity to provide your thoughts on long- It will be on June 6th, and it's an opportunity to provide your thoughts on long-range transportation planning in the entire region. So, I encourage you to go to www.mwcog.org/vizualized2045, and I'll send out a link in my weekly emails. I encourage people to take a look at the online forum and give your feedback on transportation. I also took part in the Transportation Planning Board meeting today, and just one important thing I want to note is that Friday is Bike to Work Day, and there will be two pit stops in Tacoma Park. One in the Old Town area, I believe, near Ace, and the other on New Hampshire Avenue, near Sligo Creek. So, you can go online and register so that you can find out more about where the pit stops are, and get a free t-shirt, and things like that. Hope to see all of you there. Thanks.
Thanks. Councilwoman Dibala.
Thanks, and it being 10:15, many of the things I was going to say have been stolen by other people already, which is great. So, to the Larch Fire, thank you, police and fire for showing up. Thank you, neighbors, for showing up. There is a GoFundMe page, as well as the Adventist Services, which is a nonprofit. The GoFundMe is called Help Norma and George, and both funds have blown through their initial goals, which is great, because this family needs... Thank you. This family needs everything, and insurance is not going to come quick enough to buy new clothes and toothbrushes and all that basic stuff. So, thank you for people who have already donated. I also wanted to talk a little bit about junction comments I have received. I have received a lot, counting the official public spoken and spoken comments at meetings, comments I've received for the public record. We're talking over 100 people. It's a wide range of comment. That's what I would like people to understand. I'm not hearing just one point of view, unlike the budget, in which I heard pretty much one point of view from a lot of people. So, I really want to emphasize that. I've also been to visit four or five small groups already. I'm hoping, over the next few weeks, to come visit with a group of neighbors informally. I'm not counting that in the 100, and I've talked to a lot of individual residents. That leads me to something. Again, somebody already jumped the gun on this, a plea for civility and reasonable discussion. It's not helpful for me as a council member when I get comments from residents about other residents. That's just not helpful. And so, I appreciate that tonight and other nights, most people have been very civil and respectful of the differences in opinion that other people have. I'll skip the CAG programs that I was going to talk about, because I'm going to a couple of meetings this week. We'll talk about it next week. Thank you.
Councilmember Kolar.
Thank you. I'll skip some of the things I was going to say also, since we're already getting late. Thanks to everybody for commenting tonight. I just did want to mention, although it wasn't as severe at more or less the same time as the fire that's been discussed, there was a fire on Holly Avenue.
I'm so sorry to leave that out.
Well, that's okay. It was on my block, so I feel like I should mention it. The damage was not as severe. It was obviously still a very difficult thing. The family seems to be doing okay, from what I've been able to tell in talking to them. And I would say that the response by the fire fighters was rapid and quite impressive in terms of the number of trucks that came, but it was in the middle of the rain. I think people were very confused at first about what had taken place, so I just want to express my appreciation for them. Thanks.
Great, thank you. And I just want to recognize, last week, we missed City Clerk Appreciation Week, and so we just want to say, appreciate our City Clerk Appreciation. And while we're on appreciation, I want to note that a number of us, Councilmember Smith, myself, Councilmember Siemens, Councilwoman Circe... Oh, it's going to be a late night. Councilwoman Kostic, all attended the Police Awards Banquet with staff on Friday evening. It was, the city manager has the awards. It was a really, every year, it's pretty remarkable, but this year, to hear the stories of what our officers have done, everything from helping a woman who was considering taking her own life on Carroll Avenue Bridge, to the saving of a two-month-old, was really just incredibly powerful, and we're very lucky to have our officers. So, that was a very good night. I just want to take a moment to, Councilwoman Kostic and I have been back and forth trying to write something up on the racial equity piece, and I just, we haven't gotten to it, and my apology. I also want to say that this was not an assessment. We never talked about doing a racial equity assessment on Tacoma Junction, nor on any of our programs. As we discussed this last year, when Councilmember Smith and I, and Councilmember Smith is actually the one who brought us to our attention from what Fairfax County was doing, we said this was a racial equity initiative, and that it was going to be one that was going to take us a while to put in place. Actually, I've met the folks who did it out in Seattle, and they said it took them over a decade, actually, to get their tool and get the work in place. Last year, when we put our racial equity framework in place, we said it's going to be a work in progress. We are sometimes going to get it right, and many times, we may get it wrong, or it may be very inadequate because of the lack of data that are out there that we can work with. We, as a council, decided to move forward with it, because we said it was so important for us at each of our meetings, when we're discussing an issue, to have top-of-mind who we are serving and who is left behind. And so, we said, and Councilmember Smith and I wrote a blog on this, that was the big question, that this racial equity statement, statement, not assessment, not study, was to do. But maybe we moved too quickly. That's a possibility. I know all of us, or almost all of us up here, have gone through training. Councilwoman Kostic and I have actually gone through a number of all-day trainings. The staff have gone through trainings on this. We're still developing the tool, but, you know, sometimes you get ahead of yourself. And so, I'm going to ask my colleagues up here, over the next couple of weeks, to consider that maybe we got ahead of ourselves a little bit on this one, and need to reconsider taking off the racial equity statement on our agenda packets, because maybe we're just, we're not ready to have that statement and have those conversations unless we actually have the data, and to maybe take a step back, reevaluate what data we need to do that. So, it's just something I wanted to put out there. I thank everyone for their comments on this. Again, last year, when we put this forward, this was actually the kind of conversation we wanted to have as a council and with members of the community about how we can improve the statement. But again, I don't want it to become an issue where we're not having a good dialogue on it, and so it might be that we have to step back and rethink how we're doing this. So, I just would like to ask my colleagues to do that, and then over the next couple of weeks, we can consider that. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, and I don't know if Mr. Sherman is still here. Oh, there you are, okay. I have a report on the traffic signals, so when you were speaking, I was hoping that you would still be here. The county and SHA staff are continuing to adjust timings of traffic signals and pedestrian crossing signals in the Tacoma Junction area. We did get a call today that there will be a couple more changes, and one of the changes will help the Carroll Avenue backups that have recently been reported by a number of folks. But the most important thing has to do with the pedestrian signals near the fire station. Recommendations been made, well, at first, as Mr. Sherman stated, pushing the pedestrian signal stops traffic, allows pedestrians to cross Philadelphia as well as cross Carroll. The proposal is to disconnect the pedestrian signals from each other and have separate buttons for each crosswalk. Traffic will not stop unless the button is pushed. When crossing Philadelphia, all cars will stop. When crossing Carroll, cars will stop for the first seven seconds. After that, cars on Philadelphia could turn right onto Carroll, because this is a less-used crosswalk, and cars do not make the turn onto Carroll at the rate of speed as cars turning right onto Philadelphia. I think this is a workable option. Unless there's great concern with this approach of the new signal timings and patterns, I would like to be able to tell the county and SHA to move ahead with this change. Then they will go ahead and probably early next week, make that change, and then I think we'll have a chance to see how it all works, but it should pretty much finalize the signal issues at the junction. So, I was very, very pleased to hear that they had done a lot of changes and really looked at this closely. They are spending a lot of time out there observing. Again, if somebody sees some problems, it's very helpful to let us know, and to let us know exactly what time it is that they see the kinds of problems that they have.
Ms. Dibala?
Yeah.
Can I ask that we ask them about putting a Yield to Pedestrians sign there as well?
Yep.
Thank you.
My question, maybe I'm having a little trouble visualizing. You say this is a less-used crosswalk. Which one?
This is going, like, if you're going, if you're crossing across over to the fire station.
Okay, the one across Philadelphia.
The one across Carroll. The one that goes across Carroll is the one that's lesser used, and the one across Philadelphia, parallel to the fire station, is the one that's very scary, because cars come pretty fast and make that right turn onto Philadelphia. Yeah.
So, just on that last one, maybe I'm not quite visualizing it also, but when you're coming on Carroll, and you turn right to go down Philadelphia toward where we are now, right? That's the one where there's an arrow, so in many cases, cars won't even stop at all.
Yeah, they just, they feel like, that's why this would stop them.
Okay, so the arrow and the pedestrians will not coexist at this point?
That's right. It would stop them, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I do have information in the, in my city manager comments on some sidewalk projects, Larch Avenue, Lincoln Avenue, Unside Drive, and the timing related to those, so that folks can talk to their constituents. And I did want to echo the mayor's comment that, we've got kudos to the police department. You know, I think it's wonderful that these officers do help save babies, you know? The CPR to a two-month-old is really quite impressive. Talking somebody off of a suicide attempt is impressive. We also have just really good leaders, and so good supervisors, good emergency managers, and it's wonderful just to have them receive the awards and be there with their families and with the council members there is very special. So, thanks.
Terrific. All right, now we'll move on to our voting session. The first one is a resolution saying policy regarding the level of the city general's fund unassigned fund balance. We had a work session on this last week. Councilmember Siemens took his stab at rewriting the resolution. For the city council members, you have it in your green folder.
Right, so you have three versions. There's the one from Councilmember Siemens, there's, and then there's two versions that are in your package.
Okay. And I think, unless I see objections from my colleagues, that my sense in the emails was that people were generally okay with what Councilmember Siemens had put forward. So, if it's okay with everyone, we'll just look at that version? Yes?
I'm just not sure which version.
It's the one in your green, in your green packet, in your green folder.
It's the best one.
Did you not get a green folder? Yeah?
I gave my green folder away.
Ah, well, don't give your green folder away. This was the one that was circulated on Monday? Monday?
I'll go with that.
Okay. I think you commented on it, Councilmember Kolar. All right, so let's look at that resolution. If anyone wants to take a moment.
If you would like, I could say what the significant differences are between this and the previously introduced resolution. There were two things. One, obviously, I reformatted this thing a little, but I put in two things. One is that we would keep the minimum of 17% for the unassigned fund balance as a minimum, but that we would mention that we would strive to have a unassigned fund balance of 20%, recognizing that some of our revenue sources are moderately risky, and the 17% level was more typically used for less risky revenues. And the other change was to add in there that we would, if a council at some time found that they could not attain the 17% minimum, that there would be a three-year, they would have to develop a plan to show that in three years, they would get the balance back up to the minimum.
All right, will someone like to pass the resolution? I mean, move, I am so out of it tonight, sorry. Would someone like to move the resolution? Councilwoman Circe, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Siemens, discussion changes. Councilmember Kolar. You're going.
I'll take that, then. Thank you. So, I'm generally supportive of it. I have one question just relating to the reserves, and then one question about the resolution itself. So, on the reserves, one of the questions that came up, and there was an extensive exchange with our budget director, but maybe you could just shed a little bit more light on it. I'm not sure. Is Susan here? Okay. So, the question was, since there are these different reserves, which include the equipment replacement reserve and the facilities maintenance reserve, those amounts, and we talked about those extensively during the budget discussions, but those amounts are not part of the 17%. Is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, so the 17% is totally unassigned, and if you added that to these other reserves, the amount would obviously get larger to some degree.
It will be increased to almost 30% to 40%, depending on how much we have revenue at that year.
And how does that compare? I know you've done this discussion about the other communities, but how does that overall number compare with other communities, would you say?
The survey that I've done that include five cities in Maryland, the range of the reserve is between 15% to 50%. So, we are in between that range.
All right, thank you. And then, the only other question I had, and maybe we can just talk about it now up here, is I think the 17% is good. I like the phase-in. I like the idea that if we fall below, we try to get back above within three years. I'm just not sure about the 20%. And is it the 20% or the 17% meant to be the target? And if it's the 20%, where does that number come from? And I don't know if Councilmember Siemens wants to talk about that.
I would say two things. Number one is the other reserves have specific purposes that are not, they don't go away just because you're on assigned fund balance, you know, you need to use that money. And if you use money out of the other reserves, then you're just robbing Peter to pay Paul. Sorry to involve you in that.
I think the county council might have just done that.
My son's name is Paul.
Stay on the family council.
But anyways, the idea is that the 20% would be the safer level, again, because we do have revenue sources, and I use rebate as an example from the county, that at times when the economy may be poor, and we may need to dip into, the unassigned reserve may also be the time when the county or the state is kind of stealing from those other revenue sources to make their budgets work. And that's why I think it's important that we have slightly higher than 70%. I was, you know, 17% is two-months reserve. 20% is just slightly more than two-months reserve. It doesn't get to the, I think 21 and 1/2 is about, or no, 25% would be three-months reserve, because that's easy math. I should have figured that out.
I think I would say that the 20% seems like a stretch, just because that will inevitably lead to more pressure on not being able to, within the budget, if there are priority programs that we want to spend money on, and/or the tax increases. And I understand if 17 is sort of the floor, we're not required to get there, but I think the pressure will be to push for the 20, and I understand, in general, it would be good to have additional reserves, but I'm just not personally persuaded that we need to have that.
Would you like to move it in? I'm sorry.
I would just say that I think it's a matter of responsibility. We have a responsibility to maintain the proper reserves and that 17% is, I don't think sufficient, given the moderate risk of some of our revenue sources.
Since we have the resolution on the table and it's been moved in second, Councilmember Kovar, would you like to move forward an amendment to?
Sure. I'll offer an amendment that would just strike the reference to the 20%.
So that we'd be striking the first?
Probably that whole clause, let me just see. Yeah.
Do I have a second to that amendment? Councilwoman Dubala, any discussion of that amendment?
So sorry, you just went to, you just sat down. So one thing that came to light during some of the offline discussions was the matter that although we may budget less than 17% in what we budget, but our actuals, due to a number of different factors, may actually be over that 17%. And in previous years it was. So is 20% unattainable, is my question? I know, I understand we're in a different, difficult place this fiscal year, but in previous fiscal years, we set a budgeted amount for the reserves, which was maybe a little less, but our actuals actually came in at around 20%.
I think it's the difference between the timing, the beginning of the year, and you put what you think you get done over the course of the year, and then by the end of the year, some things don't get done and there's some differences. So part of it is the time when you're looking at that number.
So back to Councilmember Kovar's question, you know, if in previous fiscal years, again, keeping in mind that the current fiscal year is an anomaly.
Right.
We ultimately end up with an actual that is more in line with the 20%, then to me, it seems reasonable to say our goal is to reach the 20%. Our practice would be at a reserve level where we've budgeted less than 17%, we would need to provide a justification. And I think that's what this current resolution is saying. We're saying that our goal is to be more in line with what we are actually putting in the reserves once everything shakes out in the budget. But if we fall below 17%, what we're saying is we need to justify why. And so if, taking that as a rationale, I would be okay with keeping the 20% as a goal because it seems to be in line with our actuals in prior fiscal years, if that makes sense.
Yeah. So you would vote against the amendment?
Yeah.
So just for clarification, for that, number one, you know, we wouldn't know until well after the year if you got to 20%. So I don't know if the wording of that line might need to be adjusted if I've heard what you're saying correctly.
What I'm saying is, like in reality, you wouldn't want to necessarily end up with a whole bunch of money at the end of the fiscal year that you did not spend, right? And so our practice has been, you know, we set our budget, and we're maybe a little conservative, or maybe we're a little ambitious in terms of what we're going to be able to accomplish. And those things that aren't able to be accomplished ultimately make its way into the reserves.
Yeah.
So as a result, our budgeted amount that we tend to put forward is based on all of these projects that we think we're going to be able to complete. But what we are not able to complete may end up in the reserves. So to me, I read that first line as saying, hey, let's try to make sure that we're setting our budgeted amount more in line with what we can feasibly consider adding in the reserves, if that makes sense. Like should you, at the end of the fiscal year, should we end up with a bunch of money based on projects that we have not completed, for whatever reason? And ultimately, that money ends up in the reserves.
I guess what I would recommend, though, is that first line might better than say strive to have the general fund reserve be 20%, but set the item at the 17.
At the 17.
So I think that's where, because if you set it at 20, if this comes forward as set at 20, I'm going to be giving you a budget that has an unassigned fund balance of 20%. And then you probably will have a higher amount than that at the end of the year.
Let's hold that thought while we deal with the amendment that's on the table. Councilwoman Kostick.
Thank you. I want to clarify, though, that I believe in, it was in 2014, our level was at 20%, but I think it was 13% to 14% for the years following that until this year. Is that correct? Am I remembering that correctly?
It was a little higher than that, but it was, yes, we had, we had one year when it was, when it was better, but then it was down after that. We've been in the 13% range.
Okay. And I know we had some exchanges, I asked some questions from both of you, and it seemed to me that your recommendation was pretty solidly at the 17%. Do you see an advantage to going to the 20% or have a strong recommendation for doing that?
I think 17% is quite adequate or appropriate, you know, at this time, especially when we are at the level of our reserve balance at budget time is 2.6 million. So from 2.6 million, you want to go up to 20%, it seems to me is quite a big stride to go forward. So going from, you know, 2.6 million, which is much lower than 17%, going up to 70% is more easily achievable than going up higher to 20%.
I have a different view on this, and that is that the amount of money that we tend to need in the unassigned reserve, I think, is closer to 17%. I think 20 is a lot. That doesn't mean I don't like extra funds available, but I think that we really do have a balance in a community with a number of folks that have challenges with paying taxes. And so I have that, you know, I tend more to the 17% amount, just in terms of the actual amount for what we do on kind of the ins and outs of the day and the kinds of special occasions that come up over the course of the year.
Thank you. Based on that and the fact that I generally consider both of you to be pretty risk averse, I support Councilmember Kovar's amendment.
All right. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. All right, the amendment passes. Any other amendment or comments on?
Actually, I had noticed that in the, in the resolution by Councilmember Siemens did not include the extra, be it further resolved, to reconsider this every three years, and that was something the mayor had asked for. I don't, just mentioning that you don't have to add it or not, but that was one thing that was not included.
I did see that, and there was a reason why I started to write it. And I thought.
The number four talks, it's not about, is not about looking at it every three years, but it may address what you wanted.
Well, yes, I think it addresses it fine, and actually I was more worried that another council might undo. So, yeah, no, I'm fine with it. Thank you for catching that, though. Any other changes or suggestions? All right, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Awesome. That passes. We have a reserve policy. Thank you. All right. I know, I'm very excited about the reserve policy. Second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2019 tax rate. There are no changes from the week before. The tax rate we are setting at, sorry, I'm looking at. I know.
5291.
5291. Does someone like to move? Councilmember Smith, do I have a second for the ordinance? Councilwoman Dubala, any discussion or questions? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember Dubala? Councilmember Kostick? Councilmember Siemens? Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Searcy?
Aye.
Okay. We now will vote to convene as the Stormwater Management Board for the final adoption of the Stormwater Management Budget. Will someone move to vote to go into be the Stormwater Management Board? Councilwoman Kostick, do I have a second? Councilwoman Searcy, all those in favor of moving to be the Stormwater Management Board, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, we are the Stormwater Management Board. And we have the second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2019 Stormwater Management Budget. Would someone like to move that? Councilwoman Dubala, do I have a second? Councilwoman Kostick, any discussion or questions? No? Will the clerk please call?
Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember Dubala? Councilmember Kostick? Councilmember Siemens? Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Searcy? Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Next, we have the second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2019 budget. Would someone like to move that? Councilwoman Smith, a second? Councilwoman Searcy, any questions or discussion on the budget? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember Dubala? Councilmember Kostick? Councilmember Siemens? Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Searcy? Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Woohoo! I just had to say. I know. Yay, the budget's done. The budget is done. FY 2019 budget is done. Congratulations. Thank you to our finance director. I'm hoping you can go home now and do lots of sleeping. All right, our next item up is the first reading ordinance approving the traffic calming on Fifth Avenue between Orchard Avenue and Eastern Avenue. We had a public hearing on this a few weeks ago. I don't know if there's any discussion of this. Councilwoman Kostick, would you like to say?
Yeah, I'll just make a couple of quick comments. I think it's, I'm very supportive of this traffic calming measure being put in. I know the residents are very much looking forward to it and have concerns about the traffic at this location. I also want to note, I appreciated the racial equity impact statement on this one, and it draws attention to something that I think is really important and something we have as a priority to address later this year, which is the fact that our sidewalk and traffic calming requests currently do not work very well for people who live in multi-unit buildings. They really are designed for people in single-family homes. And I think it will be very important to circle back and make sure that we address this. So that's a priority of mine in the future and hope we can move forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would someone like to move the ordinance? Councilwoman Kostick, do I have a second? Councilwoman, Councilmember Siemens, any discussion or questions? Councilwoman Dubala?
I have one question. Is the money to do this estimated at $8,000? Is that in this fiscal year's budget, or will it be next fiscal year?
I believe it's for this year.
Any other questions? All right, since this is the first reading, I'll just call the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Now we will move on to a packet of items. We had our work session on this last week. The first is a resolution authorizing an application for design project funding through the Transportation Alternatives Program. I turn over to the city manager.
I'll just, I'll just mention that what you have before you are, I think there's five different, no, six different resolutions that all put forward, just five?
Four.
Okay. I'm sorry, there's four, but they have some different, multiple recipients. For the Transportation Alternatives Program, the Community Legacy, the National Capital Strategic Economic Development Fund, and the Strategic Demolition Funding, these various are, gives the cities blessing to have a number of folks enter in for grant applications with the state. The city has to submit them and disperse the funds to them. The information comes from these various entities, and it's, they are competitive processes. The Transportation Alternatives Program is for design work related to the Tacoma Junction intersection. For community legacy money, there would be, and for the National Capital Strategic Economic Development Fund, there are grant applications for the Tacoma Park Cooperative Nursery School for a building on New Hampshire Avenue, for the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Co-op. There's requests for funds for improvements to its existing facility, and for the Neighborhood Development Company for site work at the Tacoma Junction project. So these are all, I think, projects that are the kinds of things that tend to be supported by the council, and we'd like your support so that this can accompany their grant applications.
And I would just like to mention to let all of council know that for the TAP grant, Councilmember Hucker and Councilmember Reamer also submitted letters in support of this.
And District 20.
And District 20. Oh, awesome. I didn't see the District 20 ones. Great. All right, and Councilwoman Searcy, do you have a question?
Quick question. What's the period of performance for these? Is it one fiscal, is it a year? Is it two?
It's longer than that. I mean, we were using it for Flower Avenue and for Ethan Allen, so it takes a while.
It takes a while. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you.
I was going to take your spot. Go ahead.
No, you go first, because I do want to find the right sheet of paper.
I want to make sure that it doesn't say it in this worksheet, but I think it said it in the last worksheet. So for the first one, the $200,000 that would be, or the matching fund, you've got it, you've got it in your head for the fiscal '20 budget.
That's right. It was in the, there was money.
20%, not 200,000.
Right, it's 160,000.
Councilmember Kovar?
Oh, thanks, yeah. So I just want to, we talked about this last time, but I just want to explore a little bit more. So we're not going to be talking about the traffic study till next month, as I understand it.
I don't even know what we're going to do.
We're not talking about it this month.
Close enough, right.
And so, and that could be a lengthy process to go forward with a potential reconfiguration if we decide to support it, whether or not the Tacoma Junction development is approved, whether or not that's approved, because, you know, it's a long process. You have to get money to reconfigure. There's questions about potentially moving the Morrison Park structure and so on. And so we're asking for this grant now without necessarily being in a position where we can know for sure whether we will end up using the funds, because we don't know for sure if we're going to approve that. So is this to avoid missing an opportunity to get the money, but we're not literally committing ourselves to either spending the grant money and/or doing the reconfiguration that it could be connected to?
That's correct.
It's a long question.
And this, and this is actually for planning money, so it could plan, and you could say, you know what, this isn't something we want to pursue.
So if we got the grant, and I think we said last week that we would find out in September, or something, September or the fall, and if by that point, depending on how things flow with our discussions here, a decision were to have been made that we didn't want to go forward with it, I'm not saying that that's what will happen, we could indicate that we didn't want the grant, and the state would be happy to potentially give it to somebody else if they were, if they were going to give it to us, which is not guaranteed either, right?
Right, I mean, we'd probably know beforehand and would have withdrawn.
Right. So this is a way to ensure they don't miss an opportunity, assuming that we decide we want to go forward with it.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Smith?
On the same lines as my colleague regarding the grant for the intersection, if we don't go forward with the project, but we do want to make some reconfigurations of the intersection, we could still, this grant would be appropriate for that, right?
Oh, yeah. No, this is, this is for the, this is for the intersection. This has not, this isn't related to.
It's not tied directly.
Absolutely not.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, so we'll take these one at a time. The, would someone like to move the resolution authorizing an application for design project funding through the Transportation Alternatives Program? Councilwoman Kostick, move. Councilmember Siemens, second. Any other questions on this one? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? It passes. Next, resolution authorizing submission of the FY 19 Community Legacy Application, and this is for the Tacoma Park Cooperative Nursery School.
And for the co-op.
And for the, oh, sorry, yep, and for the co-op. Two co-ops. Who would like to move this? Councilmember Smith, do I have a second? Councilmember Siemens, any questions on this one? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Next, we have the resolution authorizing submission of the FY 19 National Capital Strategic Economic Development Application, and this one is just the one for the nursery school. Would someone like to move this one? Councilwoman Kostick, second. Councilwoman Dubala, any questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Finally, resolution authorizing submission of the FY 19 Strategic Demolition Application, and this is for the Tacoma Park Cooperative Nursery as well as Neighborhood Development Company. Would someone like to move this one? Councilwoman Searcy?
I'd just like to ask a question.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So.
I actually, can I just? I, I actually, can I just finish this part?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Because I've already started. So, sorry, I move, do I, I just want to take it in order. I have a move, do I have a second? Councilwoman Dibala, and now we can ask questions. Go ahead, Councilmember Kovar.
I didn't realize you didn't get the second.
Yep.
So, this is sort of in the same category with respect to NDC's application for the grant. If, for whatever set of reasons, through the council decision-making process, a decision was made not to go forward with the project, what would happen with this money? If it were to be.
Then the grant's no longer applicable. I mean, the same thing with the, with the nursery school. If, you know, if any of those, if a project doesn't go forward, then, then.
Okay.
Doesn't go forward.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Abstained.
Okay. One abstain. All right, so that passes. Six, four, one abstain. Okay. Next is a consent agenda item. Would someone like to move the consent agenda?
Move.
Councilmember Siemens, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Circe, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Consent agenda passes. I say we just take a five-minute break, let people get settled, and we'll come back and get to our work session. Hey, we did it before midnight.
Before 11:00.
Got a break in before midnight.
All right.
Yes. So, just to let the council know what you have in front of you. As we have identified some of the key issues, you have one chart that outlines the issue, such as height, public space, trash and recycling, environmental matters, a column for questions and concern, and then a column to make notes on whether or not you want to see something related to this in the resolution.
Is this like a test?
No, it's not a test. The other document that looks similar to that has information in it related to each of the topics that the staff has put together. You have another packet of material, questions that we, the council, has been putting to NDC and Street Sense over the last month and a half when we've been having our conversations, and so their answer is there. And then we have the stormwater. Councilwoman Dibala is not back yet.
I'm here.
Yeah. Oh, she's there, okay. And then some other documents that we will use as we go through this evening. So, I think I'm going to turn it over to the city manager?
Woo-hoo!
Yes.
Okay. So, as you mentioned, the, we did try to compile some information, but this goes to speak to the, for the several items that are on your, kind of are the topic for this evening. And so, the concept for this evening is to talk about areas that there's been discussion among council members, sometimes some differences of opinion, sometimes a number of questions, and, and most of these have trade-offs. And so, trying to divide this up into a fairly systematic way to go through the discussion this evening and, and get some direction on these, on these trade-offs as we go through them, because sometimes they interrelate with each other. I think any kind of straw decisions that you might make wouldn't come till after you go through them all, at least at once. But I, I'll, I'll talk through them very briefly. We do have Mr. Washington from NDC, as well as staff. I thought the staff were going to get the night off tonight, but...
They get the day off tomorrow.
I'd like to have that.
I have.
And so, the topics this evening have to do with building height en masse, public space, trash and recycling collection, with some discussion about deliveries related to that, and then environmental sustainability elements. And so, when you kind of look at the, the document that has space for your notes, it gives some background information on questions about the issue related to height. And on this, the, we tried to make sure that we had accurate numbers from the, from NDC and from the two scale drawings that had been presented to us in the various presentations. So, the top of the tower is 45 feet, the top of the rounded facade is about 41 feet, the flat roof is at 34 feet 10 inches, the section of the roof nearest the co-op is 35 feet, the first floor clear interior height, 16 feet, the second floor clear interior height, 10 feet. The maximum height allowed under zoning is 50 feet, and there's, there's sometimes some discussions about that. And then, then there was kind of discussing, there's been a number of questions about the, the original plan that didn't have the Johnny's lot associated with it, which was more the 34,000 square feet versus a larger parcel. When we go through, so in looking at this, part of the question is, you know, can you do something, is the height appropriate, or can you, and how does it compare? I did put in, in, in your information even a, a little mock-up comparing the height of the building to the fire station. And so, one of the things that, yes, this was a request today, latest hit today, from Councilwoman Dibala, and I appreciate it. So, really what this does is, the tower of the fire station is, is stated to be at 39 feet 10 inches, I think, but that's the way the county calculates it where there's, it's not exactly to the point. They take this, they take a median point of the slope, and then the way that they measure where the base is differs a little bit. And one of the things that you'll notice when you look at a picture of the fire station is that there's a real slope difference from the sidewalk up to the building, more pronounced on the side with the tower than on the left side of the building, where the volunteer side of the building is. So, when I, when I kind of put it next to the proposed drawing of the, the lot at the, at the city lot, the building at the city lot, I put the tower at where the, about 40 feet would be. On the, on one of them is if you align the base of the fire station at the building base, and the other is if you kind of align the sidewalks, and that's why there's, there's a little bit of difference there. And as you'll see, when, when you align it at the sidewalk level, the, the tower of the fire station is very comparable to that going across of the building, and the, you know, and actually, the width of the whole fire station massing is just a little bit bigger than the yellow portion of the rendering of the building. So, it's, so they're very comparable in terms of proportions. And so, I think that's, that's useful to see. It's, it's not the way it looks in real life, because you go around a corner to the fire station, and there's differences in topography. So, this is one way to look at massing, and one way to look at height. There are other ways, but this was a request of, of Councilmember Dibala, and it is kind of helpful to see for something that's within the district and in the, in the close area, how it compares. Then, on public space, we did...
Actually, Ms. Lutz, can I just?
Yeah.
Let's just deal with this.
Deal with this?
Yeah, I think, I think so, because we're all looking at it now, and I think if you start talking public space and give us dimensions on that, all this is going to be lost. So, I actually had a question in the chart on your, on the notes, where it says, "The tower for the elevator and stairs needs to be the height it is to get to the roof and is the iconic feature that helps add interest to the site."
I think, does, does the elevator actually go to the roof?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, I just wanted to make sure to accommodate the elevator, it needs to be that, that height, and it's not that height, because we want to make it iconic. So, it is that...
You need to, to get to the elevator, it does have to go up above the roof.
Okay. And I just wanted to make sure to accommodate the elevator, that's the height it has to be.
Okay. That's right. And so, you know, from a, from a, from a design perspective, when it comes to the kind of rounded, rounded facade, I personally, and this is a judgment, a subjective judgment thing, like the fact that this is not boxy, like most of downtown Silver Spring and a lot of the other new developments that I see around. It's just my personal preference. Yep?
Just one question.
Mm-hmm.
Falling up on the mayor...
Sure.
Falling up on the mayors. So, if, say, for example, the first floor was not as tall as it is, getting back to the discussion with Professor Cronroth, presumably, and maybe you can correct me if this is wrong, the height of the elevator tower could also be less? I mean, in other words, that's not unique?
That's right. It's tied to this height of the building. Yeah.
Right, okay. And the top part has to be the top part, so there's room for the cabin or whatever it is to go up there.
That's right.
But if you have lower, fewer feet below that, then it's that much lower itself.
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'm not sure that...
All right. I think I have to ask... Mr. Washington, did you want to say anything about, sorry?
I mean, I think one of the questions and points that, that Mr. Cronroth brought up early in the, earlier in the evening, that had to do with, you know, what does the interior feel like? That's a real question. It was an interesting discussion about talking about what's the difference between kind of the ceiling of one level and the floor of the other, and is there some movement of that once more specs of the building get done too? So, I mean, those are, those are things that can't be resolved at this point.
But so, the difference between what Professor Cronroth was talking about, the difference between two feet and four feet, it sounded like, in the, in the space of the ceiling, is that just kind of the range of what you could potentially see, depending on how the various mechanicals and HVAC and so on?
I am, I am not a builder, so then the question is, is what, you know, what does need to be kind of in the mechanical space between what's a ceiling and what's a floor?
Okay. I'm sorry, could, Councilmember Kovar, is there a question I can answer?
Well, the, when Professor Cronroth was talking, he said, "Well, the space shown on here is roughly two, is two feet in each case for, from the ceiling of the usable space up to the actual ceiling," or the top of that space. But then later on, he said, "Well, maybe it would be four feet." And I was just wondering, is that just to be determined based on how the various functions are put in there, or is that...
Well, we would, we would set the, the building height to what we thought would accommodate different, you know, mechanical things and things like that. What actually ends up, at the end of it, would be depending on who the tenant is, and so the tenant would derive that. But we would set the height to allow for different types of uses.
Okay. But then you could vary the open space a little bit depending on what the tenant might want, is that...
Correct, yes.
Okay.
I'm wondering if, Mr. Washington, could I ask you to talk a little bit about why you designed the building this way with this particular height and what you see as the advantages of having that height?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. So, we, you know, we took our expertise as developers and the expertise of our architects, Street Sense, who have worked in many developers, and just felt that that is what the marketplace is calling for. And I think, you know, maybe jumping ahead to what people are asking, you know, could, would it make a difference if the building were two feet lower, four feet lower? We believe would make quite a difference, and, you know, I'd take the example, I don't know of any of you that's, you know, pickling, Councilmember Kovar, you, you, I assume you have a nice house here in DeCobbe Park?
(laughing).
Is it a, is it a two-story, I mean, I'm sorry, is it a two-story house?
Yes, two-story.
Okay. How high would you say the ceilings in your, in your living room are?
Nine feet, probably.
Okay. And your upper floor?
Maybe a little less.
So, so maybe your overall house is maybe, you know, you had an attic and things like that, is maybe 24 feet, something like that, something like that. So, if you were to lower that house from like 24 feet down to 22 feet, I mean, walking down the street, I, I would subject you, you know, it wouldn't make much of a difference. But if you lowered your living room from that nine feet down to seven feet, that'd make quite a difference, and so, yeah.
Right. But there's a difference between lowering from, you know, 18 to 16 in a commercial space and lowering from nine to seven.
Well, to a commercial tenant, it's, it's the same type of thing. I agree, it's different than a living room versus a commercial space, but that's what, you know, a modern commercial, you know, tenant is looking for, and they want that. And, and, you know, you know, development's tough, but I mean, like, for instance, a restaurant to a restaurant business is very tough. These are, you know, and what we've called for, what we've agreed to, you know, in our plan with you, is to have, you know, not big chain restaurants, but local restaurants, entrepreneurs, small business people. And, you know, they are struggling, and I'm sure you all are familiar with statistics. I mean, something like, you know, 95% of restaurants don't make it after five years. And so, to them, that experience inside is just very important, and we want to make sure that we give them every advantage we can to be successful, to have sort of the thriving type of environment we want. So, I think it's important, very important to the tenant, it's very important to us as to provide a good project, and so, you know, I know that there is, you know, something to make it, you know, shorter, and we did. I mean, remember, we started, you know, back in October, we presented the three-story building. Some people actually liked it, but some people didn't. And so, we made to us, you know, a big compromise to bring it down to two stories, and we think that by doing that, it's a height that's very appropriate. You sort of saw this comparison to the fire station. I think Councilmember, or ex-Councilmember Fred, you know, in his blog, talked about the Mark's Kitchen building. So, it's, it's a two-story building, and, and we think that the, you know, taking a, you know, a couple of feet off it, nobody will notice. And, and, you know, to be frank, the people who were opposed to it, you know, they're still going to be opposed to it, but it would make a huge difference to people inside. And so, we, we feel very strongly that it's the height that it should be, and that the interior spaces are the height they should be.
Well, we're not doing an overall response to all these things now, that may come later tonight, but I would just say that...
I didn't know when I'd get my chance.
Well, I don't know when I'll get mine either, but if no one notices it, then no one notices it. So, that's just as much of an argument for doing it as not doing it.
Well, I'll notice it inside, is my point.
Inside.
Councilmember Siemens?
So, that was...
Oh, fold, okay.
My mistake.
All right, Councilwoman Dibala?
Yeah. If I can remember them, there are three questions that I have, and, and they're related. So, so there, there were, there are a number of people that have, that have contacted me, and they feel that, that a little bit lower would really, that they, you, I understand what you're saying, but they feel that that would really be important, even a couple of feet. So, part of it is in the, the sandwich between the two floors, whether it's two feet or four feet. And part of it is in the, the height of the first floor, and part of it is in the facade in terms of how it looks so big. So, with those, playing with those pieces, so the, the first question is from an energy point of view. Higher, higher ceilings means bigger windows, but lower ceilings means less space to, to heat and to cool. So, one question is, have you thought about that aspect of it, and where, do, where does that come out? Is it more about the, the look when you're inside, because it's so much more light, or is it about the efficiency of the building?
It's both. I mean, the look is very important and just the overall feel. I mean, as we know, retail is, is, you know, under assault by things like, you know, Amazon and forces like that where people can deliver. So, one of the things that we really think of in terms of commercial developers is the experience, that, you know, people want to come to a cafe or a restaurant, they don't, you know, and they come there for the experience. And so, certainly, the appearance is part of it. In terms of energy efficiency with modern sort of heating and cooling systems, the amount of volumes is important, but one of the great, one of the key things is the amount of light. And so, by having sort of taller ceilings and bigger windows, that more light in, and so you save on the energy cost of providing the light. And it's also not just in terms of savings, but the, again, the experience, remember, we're going to have office workers on the second floor, they also value that, and so it becomes more desirable to them. So, I think the energy savings are sort of a trade-off, if not like a net positive for having, you know, a bit height, if you, if you do it right.
Yeah. Then the other, the other question I had about the, is about the facade, and whether if, if the goal is to somehow make it shorter, would that be a place where there would be less impact if the facade was adjusted up, down a bit?
Well, if you, to adjust a facade, you're shrinking the floor height inside, you, you know, that they sort of, if I understand your question, it goes together.
You're talking about the parapet.
Thank you. I need the parapet on the top.
Okay. So, the parapet, again, that's a trade-off. We, we thought that created sort of the appearance of the building, wanted it, also helps to mask some of the mechanical equipment that might be upstairs. So, we could look at perhaps adjusting the parapet, but I think there's sort of trade-offs with that.
Yeah. Yeah, I was wondering if, since the HVAC is currently designed, is toward the back, if maybe it's possible to lower the, to lower the parapet, thank you, a bit to, and then my third question, there are some people who are concerned that an interior space that big would somehow, 10 years from now, get turned into three floors inside instead of two. Would you like to comment on that?
I believe that's impossible from a zoning and permit perspective.
Just wanted to hear you say it.
Okay. And it, I don't, it wouldn't fit anyway, so, but no, it's, you can't do that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on height? I think as, you know, you're, I think as we do this, if, on your sheet, if you have something that you're considering wanting to add to the resolution or thoughts, mark them down, then what we'll do is we'll walk through each of these and then go back through them. I would like just to note, so in case I forget it, if we do consider reducing the size of the parapet, I want to think of how that is in relation to the elevator tower. So, just keep that as a thought, and, because I may forget it. All right. Why don't we move on now to public space?
For public space, I will, I will say our staff did an enormous amount of work in trying to...
I'm sorry. Can you get back for just a second?
Yep.
Because I, I would, is this the time to talk about the 34,000 square feet?
Oh, I can do that. Yeah, because that was the last bit of this.
Sorry, I skipped that.
Because that's really important to me, to hear the rationale on that right now.
Right. Well, I, you know, this is one of these, it's kind of a story, I think, more than anything else. So, originally, when the RFPs were issued, there was mention that the potential for expanding out to especially taking the auto body shop, made some sense, saying that it's a possibility that somebody may want to pursue to make a more manageable project, recognizing that the actual size of this lot is not that big. It feels kind of big to other people, but in, in the greater scheme of, of how you do development, it's, it's not very large, and it's a constrained site. And so, when, there was a good amount of encouragement to NDC to, once, once they became the successful proposer, you know, to look into that, and they did what, they could speak to what they pursued. The issue with, I guess, some of the advantages of having the larger building and taking that larger property is that you're able to get more public parking spaces. And I think that that's one of the things that, you know, the council had wanted to make sure, that this provides parking not just for the tenants of the building and the co-op, but for other entities in the junction area. The other thing is that it allows the entrance to the garage to be moved further west, which, when we heard from the traffic folks, was a more safe and advantageous location. The other thing is, and part of the reason we kind of encouraged taking the auto repair shop, is that if you're trying to do a stroll, it's not that pleasant to walk past auto repair places. It's, it's a nicer stroll to have a contiguous kind of storefront, retail-oriented space from the co-op in a longer distance. And so, there's that. If the size of the, if the property of Johnny's were kept, but the building were just smaller, that's probably not financially feasible. It's a fairly expensive thing to take Johnny's property, the auto repair shop, and do what's involved. And so, there's, you know, I think that would be a, something that you don't get the leasable space to kind of offset the, that expansion. And so, those are the, the kinds of things that I saw, but maybe there's some other discussion that, and reasons.
Yeah. Do you have anything to add to that, is, in terms of, the question that I, the question that I have is, is so in the October resolution, it talked about a 34,000 square foot outline.
Can I just clarify, actually, that was actually, and we had this conversation, I don't know if Mr. Schlegel is still here, and, yeah, this afternoon, the way that, I think the, we worded the resolution, and actually, Councilmember Kovar pointed this out in our meeting this afternoon, is, we said we wanted the traffic study to take into consideration 34,000 square feet, and then it was like...
And the larger size.
And the larger size.
To see if it made, made, see if it made significant difference in the traffic generated from the project.
And so, that's what it said, so that, and then Councilmember Kovar asked the traffic engineers when they were here, was there a difference? And they said, "No."
So, I, I'm just trying to get clear for everybody.
Right. But I just wanted to make sure we all understand that in the October resolution, we did not have a clause that said that this development was supposed to be 34 square feet.
34,000 square feet.
What did I say? Really crazy.
So, so maybe, maybe we've had the discussion that, I just, so many people have asked me about this, so I just want to have it clear.
And if I could just add, I know that, you know...
Why, why there's not a current 34,000 square foot plan.
It's, you know, and I know we can get very technical, and we're developers, and you all are becoming, you know, almost developers through this process, but, you know, the number, I mean, essentially, the, what our, the big picture I want to make is that our plan has been very consistent for four years, going back to RFP. It's been a two-story building which encompasses most of the flat portion of the lot. When we acquired Johnny's, it became bigger, but it's still, it's a two-story building that encompasses most of the flat portion of the lot. That's where we've been for the last four years, and, and we've tweaked it here and there, we've tried to make it better, but it's always been the same basic project. Okay.
Any other questions regarding height? Councilwoman Dibala?
And just to, just to clarify, I think in the, in the smaller property, there was more like 54 parking spaces versus 74, or something like that.
I think, it sounds about right.
So, it's a, it's a fairly significant difference in terms of the parking capacity.
Councilwoman Circe?
Real quick, I'm, it's late.
Really?
Yeah. Contacts are drying out, I'm not seeing straight. So, I just want to make sure, because one of the questions that I raised was about trying to make a comparison between the different elevations of the building and the buildings that are adjacent, right? So, the top of the fires, the firehouse to the co-op. And it seems like there's a really nice difference of elevation that is definitely in line, at least from what I see here, but I want to make sure I have the numbers right. So, the elevator is 45. The next segment of building, not the yellow piece with the real nice stuff at the top, but is that 34, 10? So, the, the, the...
It would be a little bit higher than that, because there's still a bit of a parapet over that.
Over that one, too.
It's just not as, it's just not quite as tall, I think.
Okay. So, so would it be as tall as the, the parapet, the, the yellow section, or is it, because I think this flat roof section here is showing 34, 10 in the document that we have, and so that would put it below, basically would be, the elevation would be on par perhaps with more or less where the fire station is. I'm just trying to make sure that I understand how the elevations of the building progressing down towards the co-op, if that makes sense.
Do you want to talk, Alex?
Yes.
If you can go, I'm sorry, Mike, because if people are watching at home, they can't hear you. Sorry, thank you.
So, the way the movement is done is to the flat roof, not to the parapet.
Okay.
But the section closest to the co-op is at 35 feet.
Is at 35.
Right.
And then, the next section is at 41.
It's, well, that's at the very top of the rounded portion.
At the very top. And then the next section is at...
It looks like it's, it looks like it's, um, I don't know, we'd have to measure it.
Yeah, that's the one I'm, I'm asking about.
But it's somewhere in between. It's somewhere in between.
Yeah. So, if it's that flat, if, I'm, I'm not sure if it's that flat roof, which would put it at about 35, that's in the calculations, or if it's something different, it looks like it's a little shorter than, than the other section, and definitely shorter than the elevator shaft. So, I'm just trying to, to figure out, if I'm thinking about the elevations, the fire state, the top of the fire station is 39, the elevator 45, the next section is 35, then we're 41, then we're at 35. Like, in reality, the different segments of the building, if the heights are what we're saying, it's, we're only talking about two sections that may be higher than the tallest point of the fire station. I'm just trying to make sure I understand what we're trying to...
That's, that's right.
And it's really, it's the tower.
It's just the tower.
It's the tower, and the, and the very center of the, of the rounded facade parapet would be like a foot higher than the tower of the fire station. And that's, that's the tower of the fire station, but the, but the fire station tower is also on a higher level of ground, so it's one of those weird things.
Things.
It's hard to say where the foot lays.
Right. So, when we're talking about height and, you know, comparison to the surrounding areas, we're really only talking about these two aspects, if, if I'm understanding things correctly. So, I just, I'm, I'm just trying to mentally wrap my head around what's, you know, when we're talking about the height, the overall height, and how it relates to the adjacent buildings.
All right. And again, if I could throw in something, I mean, the, the maximum height allowed under zoning was 50 feet. So, I mean, we are well below what...
No, I'm, don't, we're not...
Oh, sorry.
Because they will, Dibala, sorry.
So, we, you know, it is, you know, well below what, you know, what the professionals who set the zoning for this area thought was the maximum height allowed, so it is much shorter than zoning allows.
Can I ask, can I just ask that?
Can you push my mic on soon?
I know, I know that you have got this already, but rather than belabor it tonight, can we just get the staff to, to get, to get that information to me about the county, county zoning? Thank you.
Definitely. I'll double-check everything, yeah.
We know what it is. That, I mean, we can double-check, but that...
Right.
Well, it's 50, we know.
It's 50 feet. It's 50 feet.
It's 50 feet.
I had one last question about height, too.
Do you have something that contradicts that, or?
No.
Okay.
It's, we know it's 50 feet.
I had one last question about height. So, our, our former colleague, Councilmember Schultz, which Mr. Washington mentioned, was comparing this potential, this site plan to the structures in Old Town where Mark's Kitchen and the Italian place are. So, can we get later the height and frontage of those two buildings?
Yeah, we had gotten most of that, and we had the other side of the street as well, which is about the same massing, but, but we'll, we'll make sure we have the height information for you.
That'll be great, thanks.
Okay, any other questions on height? All right.
Okay, try about public space?
Yeah.
Okay. So, as I, as I mentioned, that between trying to get grant applications in today, our staff did pull together this, this sheet of paper that, that I sent out earlier, and, which compares what's kind of considered the public space area for the Tacoma Junction proposed development to the Tacoma Urban Park gazebo hardscape area. And the total square footage of the Tacoma Junction Development Public Space Area from, between where the lay-by ends and the driveway, from the front of the businesses to the curb is approximately 2,700 square feet. That 2,700 square feet does not include the public space that goes down along in front of the rest of the building towards the co-op. Of that, we also identified, if you subtract it out, an eight-foot wide sidewalk, what it would be, if you said maybe about six feet along this curb wouldn't really be used because you'd have the planters and stuff, you may have some benches there kind of looking in, or some other kind of neat things to sit on. But if you take out that, an eight-foot wide sidewalk across the side and a six-foot buffer, you come up to 1,678 square feet. The, and obviously that is area that would also have some landscaping and stuff in it, because you, you know, the idea is to sit on some neat things, so you can have a talk with a friend and that kind of thing. At the gazebo, the total area is 3,161 square feet. If you subtract out again, an eight-foot wide sidewalk area and a six-foot buffer, it comes out to 1,761 square feet. So it's, it's a way to kind of get your idea around how big it is, it's, they're both configured a little differently. The one at the gazebo is more, has the opportunity for more performance space because it has the gazebo, and so people certainly gather around when there's something, and they stand in the area that would be a sidewalk if there were one there, and that kind of thing. This other area is more, is a little bit more thought to be a social interaction place, as opposed to performance space per se. And, you know, it's certainly how the, how the different landscaping gets chosen and what you put there kind of help define how comfortable it is for different kinds of uses, so.
Councilmember Kovar, do you have a question? Councilmember Kovar?
When, when the city manager's finished-
Yeah, that's all I can say right now, yeah.
Just move it along.
So, just a few observations. On the question of parking spaces, I don't think parking spaces determine the square footage, because you could, you could have as many parking spaces as you currently have in the site plan, 72 or so, or whatever, whatever the number is with underground parking, and have less developed square footage above, so I don't think that determines it. Secondly, I understand there are cost concerns, but we're also supporting this grant for demolition, so that comes into play, and we could understand how that comes into play. In terms of the public space, I think there's a hand-drawn thing in here that I, that I submitted, and just to explain to people what that's about, if you look at it, you know, I was trying to see if there was a way to maintain the same facade, more or less, but create more space, and so the idea is, since in the current site plan, in the area closest to the co-op, it actually is an inset, it doesn't have the exact same frontage all the way across, and then it kind of works its way out, goes across, and then cuts into the inset. So, if you just draw it straight across where the dotted lines are, keep the inset the same size it is before, move back the elevator slightly, you kind of carve out another 2,600, 2,700 feet, so you kind of double some of the available public space there. To anyone walking on the street, or from across the street, the facade is still going to look more or less the same, and it might even line up a little bit better with Healy Surgeons. But that's 2,600 feet, and you double it, because the same thing would be upstairs, too. You kind of not-
It includes upstairs, because it's, it's, because that was a calculation of leasable space, so.
Say that again?
The 2,600 square feet leasable space is, is both levels, the amount that you, so it's-
So, you're doubling that with, you know, less than, less than a 10% change, you're doubling the public space with less than a 10% reduction. And, you know, several of my colleagues had mentioned earlier that they thought maybe the sidewalk was a little pinched where it is, if you picture along by Busboys and Poets, where it's about a 10 or 12-foot wide brick sidewalk, that's in DC, of course, you know, that's a nice, healthy sidewalk, but if you were trying to gather there, that would be a little bit more complicated. So I think some version of this, if you did this and maybe widened in various ways the utility car, or you could begin to get to a point where the, where the usable space and the public space made more sense. And just in terms of the setback, Professor Cromerath specifically said, when we were talking earlier, that as long as the inset stayed the same size, if it was in a little bit off the street, from his point of view, that wouldn't really hurt the, or have the effect of having that deep area that people would walk by and not really see. So I think some version of this type of thing would really make a difference in terms of public space without compromising the facade that's there. So I offer that to my colleagues as an option.
So, yes, what this does is it moves back the front of the building, looking as it does, but just shrinking the building back about, I guess, 10 feet more, in, in some parts a little bit less, to kind of even it out.
Right.
Yeah, so the, you know, the impact on this may not make a significant change to the facade, it would widen the area walking in front of the buildings in the portion that doesn't have the public space already. I, you know, I do think it's a question about how big is the right size for public space that was brought up, and I don't have the answer to that. I think the issue is that it reduces leasable space, and so there's a financial cost to that. And the, you know, that's something that ends up, that can come out in a different, in a different way.
Right, and in terms of trade-offs, I mean, one of the things that I mentioned before is, if you have a bigger space where more people gather, maybe you get more business. And also, just in terms of the usable space, you have two doors right there, and so, to the two businesses, the larger restaurant and the smaller retail shopper, whatever it is, and so you can't literally gather, you know, you can't stand in front of the door when you're doing your social gathering, because that would sort of be an awkward spot to sit. So that's, that's the other reason why I think having a deeper setback from the street at least gives more of an opportunity.
Well, I mean, with all due respect, Councilmember, I mean, what, you know, retail theory and everything that we learned is that, you know, that setback does hurt business, that, you know, people, that the retail should engage the street. And so we believe, you know, and we could bring in sort of restaurant, you know, owners and things like that, or any type of retail experts, and I believe, I wasn't here for the professor's presentation, but I believe he'd say the same thing. And then also in terms of the financial viability of the project, I mean, you're, you know, you're talking about taking away not just, you know, a healthy percentage, but the highest rent percentage. So the impact, you know, if you took like, you know, 5% off the back, that's much less of an impact than taking 5% off the front, that's the, you know, the most, you know, the most valuable part of it.
Well, I mean, the professor said the opposite, he said, as long as the inset itself was the same size, he didn't have a problem with it coming off the street.
That, I think that was a-
No, that was, that was what it was. I asked him that, and that was what he said, so.
Okay, okay. As I said, I wasn't here and he said that, I would think, I'd be surprised if that's what he really meant to say, perhaps he, you know-
Well, I mean, I think the question was clear, and he said that, so.
Okay.
I mean, I, I would encourage you to think about this, because without some give on the size, I think it becomes a much more challenging thing for the community.
I mean, you know, Councilman, we have given quite a bit, as I said, we've shrunk the building down, we've stepped it back, we are granting tremendous concessions to a neighboring tenant who's not even on our property for providing an alley access, we're building a lay-by, and it's not for us, that's for the other tenants, so I mean, we've given quite a bit, so, I'll just leave it there.
I'm, I'm sorry, please, can we just, no one talked during public comments when everybody in the public spoke? I ask that we give the same respect to the, the council while we're doing our work session. Councilmember Kovar, did you have anything else on that?
I'm stopping then.
Okay. Councilwoman Kostic?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Building off of Councilmember Kovar's idea here, I'm wondering about what the impact would be of simply moving, doing nothing else to the, the front of the building, but simply moving the tower back. And perhaps, I understand the advantage of having the tower there to kind of create a boundary for that public space and prevent people from running over, or walking over where the cars are coming in and out of the, of the garage, but I'm wondering if that could be achieved with some landscaping, and the tower alone could be pushed back to be at that same setback as the, the proposed restaurant space there, for not a tremendous amount of square footage loss to the business, but perhaps to create a more sort of rectangular available public space.
I mean, I see your point again, you know, it pushes back on, you know, the usable space, it decreases the amount of interaction between the front of the business and the sidewalk. So, I mean, we think it is an impact, you know, to the viability of the project.
We'd also, I know we did also get comments about how much there might be shadowing on the neighboring, on the Healy Surgeons project.
So I know there was an answer in here, and I don't recall exactly what it was, but if the lay-by were to have to move back because of the intersection reconfiguration not being exactly what, what we've been looking at, if, if it had to move back, what would be the impact on that public space? I think there was-
I figured out that it takes, it would take up about 600 square feet.
Okay.
It's like 598 in my calculations. Now, that's a very, in, in, you know, that's saying that it keeps the exact same 135, 130-foot length and, and that kind of thing, which is one of those questions that ends up being a traffic guy question more than anything else. But, but just moving it to where I saw from the traffic group had it without, if the intersection doesn't get reconfigured, if you just move it back, it's about 600 square feet that gets lost.
Okay. I would have some concerns about the public space if it were to be moved back and we lost that space. I think that would be a pretty significant loss to the public space there. The other question I have, and I know there's been some back and forth, and you might not have the answer right now, is regarding the bus stop. I feel like it's been hard to get a real sense of where the bus stop would likely go. And I've heard possibly a location more on this side of the building, and then I feel like I've also heard of a location closer to the co-op. Related to the public space, I see a real advantage to having that public space bound so that people are separate and feel separate from the road. So my concern is that if the bus stop is located in this public space area, that would create an opening that to some extent could be advantageous, because people waiting for the bus would feel welcome in the public space, and they would have a place to sit, but would also create a sense of sort of discomfort for people just hanging out there. So, do you have a location where you're primarily thinking about the bus stop? Is, what are your thoughts on that?
I don't recall these-
At this point, we were waiting to see the, some of the information from the two traffic studies. They had looked at a couple different locations, but our, the one, the AMT study particularly was to give us advice on the bus, on the buses. I have some concerns with having the bus stop in this location so close to the driveway. I think it's better to have it closer to the co-op side of, of things. And that's, you know, so that would end up being in front of the lay-by, but that's, really depends on how the intersection gets configured and, and how that all works. So I think there's still some discussions to have, depending on which configuration it is. Obviously, we want to have the bus service, and we want it to be in a good location, so that's a prime thing that we're looking at.
And I'll just note it while we're on the bus stop, I think it was comments that, I'm not sure if board members of the co-op made the comments, but the idea that having the bus stop closer to the co-op because of people have groceries and things like that, they're not having to walk down the street, they're just walking out and getting on the bus, so.
Yeah, I think it was part of the-
With, also with the traffic group's idea of the kind of triangle concept, then all the buses would be close together, so if you're transferring, it's much more convenient. But again, that has to be looked at when we get a little bit better recommendations on that.
Okay, yeah, I think we should get more information to how that would, might impact the public space.
Councilwoman Circe?
So I think my question is probably another one that will sound pretty confusing. So the, for me, the big, the big hiccup is, you know, without the traffic studies and knowing what may ultimately happen with BY Morrison Park, right? And I know one question I provided offline was, how are we really using that space? And is there a value add by relocating that park to a place where it is more accessible and therefore more regularly used than it is today? I don't think that's a question for you necessarily, but it is something that I've been really kind of struggling, because, Councilmember Kovar, I remember the, the comment that was made earlier a little different. I remember him saying, if you want to increase the sidewalk, you can, but kind of don't mess around with pushing the building, pushing, pushing things back. As long as the inlet's constant, you're okay, but you could play around with some of the sidewalk width. And so in my view, that means that maybe this public space, given all the, the things that we're trying to do, might be sufficient, provided that the relocation of BY Morrison and making it a more integrated part of the junction reconfiguration means that it's used more often than it is right now, and therefore there's a value add, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think BY Morrison Park is not used in any active way, with the exception of the, the one thing that's coming up this weekend, I think, the, whenever it is, when the Richard School of Music has its celebration. But it's, it's very rarely used. I think in terms of having it be something that's more easily used, it probably goes closer to having the option, the, the traffic group's triangle that Councilmember Kostic put forward, where there's a little bit more of a bump out on the, the other side of Carroll Avenue, in front of Spring Mill, so that that's a wider area for, for some activity there, while still maintaining the arrangement of the way the streets go that the traffic group had. So that may be the closest thing that we have. You know, we do have other public spaces, too, I mean, not necessarily right at the junction, but we have the gazebo down, down in Old Town and, and other kind of performance space, but I think that that's a really important characteristic when we look at the traffic design and, and how that area works, because we want all of it to work, and if it can help complement those, those uses, it's, it's best to do it, and this is the opportunity to think about it.
And I, and I agree, Councilmember, I mean, I think that, yeah, you're right, it's not exactly in our purview, it's over there, but I mean, you know, we want the junction to work and to thrive, and so we are going to be a neighbor and stakeholder in the junction, and so we'd be happy to join the co-op and the other businesses in the area to, you know, enhance that, you know, that redesigned park.
Great. Cue. Any, Councilmember Siemens? Yeah?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to, I think it's important that we disclose our weaknesses, and in kindergarten, they told me I didn't stay within the lines. I'm afraid tonight that we're talking about public space, then my question probably goes a little further outside the lines again. And, you know, I know with the public space, we're talking about a place that doesn't cost anybody money to use, but I, I think it's the appropriate time to talk about the roof, and I, I brought this up before, but I strongly feel that- And I, I brought this up before, but I strongly feel that, that we should provide space on the roof, kind of a patio space for, as outdoor seating and tables for the restaurant that is planned in the building. I think it's something that I see in downtown Silver Spring a lot, that's very well-used. I think if it's, and my understanding is if it's connected to the business establishment, then the, you don't need third-floor restrooms, you know, you don't need rooftop restrooms. You can use the restrooms in the second-floor establishment. Anyways, I would just like to advocate for that.
Well, first of all, you're not going outside the lines. We're talking about public space, and so I reject your kindergarten comparison, but-
Well, except that I think if it's attached to a restaurant that we're talking about, somebody would have to buy a drink to sit there.
So, I mean, the rooftop space we, we provided in our, in our plan is, is the maximum that can be achieved without significant changes to the building. It's 750 square feet, is that the correct size? That is by code the maximum you can have without what's called a second means of egress. And so, in order to get it beyond, bigger than that, you'd have to have another stair tower on the east side. So, that would fundamentally change the building. That would sort of be the side next to the co-op, it'd be bigger there. People might object to that. People might also object, and, you know, I'm not, I think we were accused of kind of overplaying it. I don't want to overplay it, but there were people who, you know, didn't want to have too much going on the roof. They felt it could be noisy, and they could have a restaurant, and you could have a party up there, and people could be loud, and so, people in other areas. And so, you know, I'm willing to explore your idea, but really thought that for both the physical, you know, reasons of the height, for the financial cost of having to do other things, and you're right, we might have to put bathrooms, I'm not sure, and that, you know, there's a restaurant, want to have a ground-floor space and then an office above it, and then up top, I don't know. So, you raise a number of potential problems, I'll put it that way.
I appreciate you saying that you're going to think of it. I've been, I really get frustrated in hearing all these reasons why we can't do things. And I am glad to hear you say that at least there may be a way to do something. I've heard an awful lot of things that we can't do without suggestions on how to make it work.
And I agree, I mean-
And I'm not talking about you.
Okay. No, we've always tried, but I think it's too, you know, I think Mayor Stewart's sort of theme of this sort of session is trade-offs, and it really is. I mean, that, you know, there are things that every one of you and every one of the folks here want done, and in isolation, you know, one is a great idea, and yours is a great idea, yours is a great idea. Put them all together, it don't work.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, we're trying.
Appreciate that.
I will say that in terms of trade-offs on the, the amount of the roof that is green roof is important for the stormwater calculations. So, if the, if more areas used for public space, then you have to do a different kind of stormwater-
And people have to drink more, right?
I'm not going to touch that.
It's late, it's late, what can I tell you?
But it would mean a different kind of, it would mean a larger box on the back of the building where the filtering happens.
That was an undisclosed weakness. Thank you.
Councilwoman Devalla?
Yeah, and I've been trying to get creative about what are the, what are the ways to, what is the best way to get a little, a little more public access, a little more public space? You saw that the rooftop was on my list too. But I, I understand that you have to put in the extra stair. It affects the, both the design and therefore the cost of the stormwater control, which is also important to us. And I hadn't thought about pushing back that elevator tower, but that, putting in stairs loses some square footage. Pushing back the elevator tower loses some square footage. They both are less than moving the whole building back. So, maybe that's something you could think about. Maybe that, maybe the tower design is, is a good way, is a good way to get a little extra space without, I kind of liked the pocket part idea though. But I, I hear loud and clear that people want to, want to have more street fund access. I also had on my list whether or not contributing to the redesign of Morrison Park would be something that, that you all could take on to contribute to that as a way to, to say, yeah, we want more public space in the junction. And I have one more, one more idea, which I've forgotten now. Is it possible to, well, of course it's possible, but let's just put it out there. While the place, while the space is being rented, there'll probably be times, especially with the second floor, when it won't be used yet, and perhaps there's an opportunity for temporary community events.
No, we had a great idea out there. We thought that the city could lease our, you know, unused space, and then you guys could, you know-
I don't quite what I meant, but-
I'm sure we could work something out like that, yes.
Okay. And while we're talking about indoor tenants, I'm assuming that you'll be looking pretty hard for nonprofits and for community groups that might want to rent some part of the second space, second floor.
I agree, I think that a-
So, that's not, it's not that you have to have commercial tenants on the second floor. Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
And I'll just say, in terms of the public space, I think as Councilwoman Circe said, and we can clarify this with Professor Cronrath, but that was one of the reasons I asked the question I did because in my prior conversations with him and really thinking about the size of this public space, or the mini plaza as he called it, and looking into like the balance of making sure we're actually creating something that is welcoming for people, and I think as he said, there weren't like these splinter offsets. I, you know, I'd be interested to think about the tower. As I've said in prior meetings aesthetically, but this is only a personal thing, the, I, I'm not, the tower doesn't quite do it for me. And so, I don't know if there's other designs we could think of about the tower that might also facilitate what Councilwoman Kostic said, but that is just a personal thing about that. And as Councilmember Siemens said, I wonder if we explored the idea of the access to the roof, just also thinking in the future. And we've already talked about adding the additional elevator on the co-op side to go down to the garage, but just thinking about what including a staircase upstairs might mean for future access and the building and other things that it might be usable at where we're at this stage. You know, I know things cost money, but it may make sense to think about having that second access to the roof for the future. So, I just put that out there as well.
Yeah, I just, I just remembered that there's a staircase allocated already on the east side for the first to the second floor.
Right, so this would just be taking the elevator up. Stairs, yes. Yeah. All right. Anything else right now for public space? All right. The next area was trash and recycling?
So, this was an area where there's, there's been a number of people asking questions about it, and I don't, I didn't have a lot of answers, so this is something that NDC may be able to answer a little bit better. So, some of the questions are just, you know, kind of imagining how the trash and recycling works as designed. What would be the impact of having enough space so that pallets or loading could pass each other, I think? So, if one's going out and one's going in, how do you do that in the corridor was a question. Then there were a number of questions about, you know, are there, is there some opportunity to store or collect some of the trash and recycling in the parking garage or some other of these options? So, it sounded like a juggling of different ideas. And I, other than the fact that it changes some of the dimensions, I don't have any answers for that from what I've understood. So, I'll leave it to you.
Okay. Well, first, I mean, I'll take your questions, but first I just want to make sure, you know, there was some, you know, misunderstandings. Or I just want to make, clarify that our intention for our trash, for our tenants is that it will be held on-site in a clean, secure location. Then when a trash truck comes, which is a time that we can control, we will have people who will wheel out the dumpsters. The trash truck will pick them up, dump them, and then they'll be back. There will be no dumpsters sitting out at any time, so I just want to clarify that. So, other than that, what, what are the questions?
I think one of the questions was the trade-off of increasing the corridor space. If this is, as we have now in the site plan, the place where deliveries would come through, right now, I think the width would be sufficient for, say, one pallet to go through. And I guess the question just for- Yeah.
Well, it's, it's a little bigger than one pallet, it's 10 feet, I mean-
10 feet, right. But you're not going to fit two, or you're not going to be able to take out the trash and do deliveries at the same time. And so, I-
Well, that's the question.
Yeah.
Yeah. It would be very tight, so I'll put it that way.
And I guess the thing that I would put forward is, you know, if we could see if we could widen that corridor.
Okay. I mean, I've heard that, and we will consider it, but I mean, I really do think it's, it is going through an awful lot of trouble for something that just really doesn't happen, you know. It's, I would think that, you know, the amount, unless the co-op's deliveries are much, you know, more frequent than, you know, we've been told, that you could arrange, you know, it's not like you're taking out trash for, you know, an hour every day or something. It's, you know, it's kind of like trash truck comes, it's in and out. I don't see why, you know, you're going to have, you know, all this commotion going on, why, you know, one person couldn't wait, you couldn't schedule it. So, I really do think it's like one of those sort of, you know, solutions where there's not a problem. But if, you know, if the council feels that that's, you know, a problem they want to address, then, you know, we'll look at it.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Can you talk about whether or not it's feasible for the co-op to have trash, trash facilities, recycling facilities in the garage? Could that even occur?
Um, I don't think that's a good idea. I don't, well, I mean, I don't know the interior of the, I mean, I've been down in the basement of the co-op, but I don't, as I, as I recall, it's sort of like office space and storage space, it's not operational. So, and I don't know where the trash is generated, but I guess from what I understand, they would have to take their trash and take it down, move it over to the garage, move it back up, move it over, and then move it back out. So, I wouldn't think they'd want to do that. It would then, so, I mean, I think, I don't think they would want that. Obviously, they have to speak for themselves. From our perspective, it seems like, again, like a, you know, a pretty big accommodation, you know, sort of cutting a hole in the garage, taking up storage space in the garage where people could park, you know, having some conveyance system, not just, now we're not talking about this conveyance for people with shopping carts, but conveyance for people with, you know, trash removal and down. It seems like a very big deal for something that I don't even know if they want to do.
Have you met with the co-op and talked to them about trash options on their property? Has that come up?
They, again, I don't, you know, I don't want to speak for them, we have met. It is my understanding that they believe they do not have space on their property to store their trash.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah, just on that point, I think Colin mentioned, and there's one version of the site plan that shows this, that there would be the potential for a trash and recycling storage space about the same size as the main one, way toward the back in the, in the studio, so-called studio section, which could potentially be for the, as he put it, as Colin put it, for the co-op's use. Is that something that is on the table still at this point?
Well, first of all, it turns out on the table, I'm sort of here to answer questions, I'm not here to-
Okay, well, so, let's assume that happened, and the co-op is willing to pay for the space and for the trash removal. Could we combine everything so that there would just be the one truck per day?
I mean, I've been on public record about this, and hopefully you all can understand. We really do not want to store other people's trash on our property. And we would really hope that, you know, the co-op can find a way to store their own trash. We're providing a means of egress and exit, and we agreed to do that. And I won't, you know, sort of sit here and feel sorry for ourselves, we knew that, we were in the front. But we would really very strongly prefer that the co-op find a way to manage their own trash.
Colin did offer that, and it's even on one of the drawings here, so I'm, I mean, I'm assuming that's a possibility, so I would like to see that happen.
It is a possibility, yes.
Good. And I assume if they were willing to pay for it, that makes it a little bit easier, right?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kostic?
I just have a quick question. So, if you have people who are taking the trash out, wheeling it out when the trash trucks are coming, that seems to suggest to me that there would be an onsite management company, or who would be the person doing that?
Yes, there will be an onsite management company.
Okay, and they would be the ones who would be bringing the trash out at that time and taking it back? It wouldn't be like individuals from each of the businesses?
No.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
The individuals, well, to speak clear, individuals would take their trash to the central trash facility, but then the building management team would take it out to the trash truck.
Councilmember Kovar, do you still have your light on?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Circe?
Thank you for bearing with us after midnight. One thing that I do think is, is important is for us to think about trash and recycling as it pertains to prospective tenants. And, you know, I don't want to find myself in a position where I am doing business negotiations over the dais between two private companies. I'm just going to be very frank. So, there are some business decisions and negotiations that need to happen behind the scenes. And I would equate figuring out the trash removal or the needs of the co-op. It's, I would consider that a business negotiation. So, as it relates to the tenants that you may have, and you mentioned that the, the width of the proposed alleyway would be sufficient. Is it because, kind of piggybacking off of Councilmember Kostic's question, is it because you have a management company that would come in and could do the necessary timing such that you won't have multiple things happening at once? Is that one thought?
Yes. I mean, one of the advantages of, you know, having a brand-new development is that you can put forth rules and regulations. And so, you can, you know, and then having a management company, and so you coordinate it, and you can coordinate, you know, you can set certain times for deliveries, you can set times when the trash truck will come, and so, yeah, you can, you can do that.
And in terms of the process, because I know this is, this is very early, you don't have your tenants just yet or lined up, and you don't know what their needs may be. As you are kind of moving through the process, is there a possibility for, if you determine there's a need with your tenants to expand this alleyway for one reason or another, is that still something that would be on the table?
Well, we'd have to figure out how wide it is now. I mean, once it's, you know, once the building wall is there, that's it, so we'd have to figure it out now.
I think that's a really good point, because it goes back to my point too about the stairs, is just also thinking about the future. So, I just want to underscore, I see where you're going.
Okay, thank you.
You're good. All right, any?
Just want to make a, there was a piece of information that we were provided about, a question about should there, could there be a cover over that corridor? And the, the understanding is that the fire department would prefer that not to be the case for their access for purposes of getting to the roof or doing a variety of things for both the co-op and for this property. So, it's not that it's out of the question, but that there is a preference from the fire department that it not be covered.
Cool. And I just want to make, just because this question is also on our sheet, to make sure, I think this has been asked and answered before, but we couldn't do trash pickup in the garage because of the height.
That's correct.
All right. The ceiling, right, because of the, right, yeah. Because this, this is describing it, because this. Yeah, the dumpsters they pick up and they, they do this.
Also tall.
Yeah. All right, any, I guess I had a question about, and this goes to a process question. I know this is a site plan, and down the road, they'll, you'll get tenants, and there'll be other plans and other things. At what stage- At what stage are sort of the trash recycling, all of that kind of like finalized?
I mean, it's just something that, well, I mean, something we don't think is that big a deal. Like, it's, it's not so, I mean, we could invest, you know, thousands of dollars and do it soon, but I mean, it's, it's something that you, you know, the trash truck comes, you figure out what time it comes, you roll out a couple of dumpsters, and you dump it. I mean, it's not, it's, it's no bigger than that.
I think the important thing from a site plan perspective is the space for the storage and, and the insurance that that can be something that's kept clean by the nature of where it's placed and that kind of thing.
So is this, what you're describing now, is that how it works in the other developments that you have built and run?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. The last area we have for this evening is environmental matters.
Yep. Didn't I just ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
Are we counting parking as part of another conversation? That'd be fine with me. I just want to know.
It was not one of the questions?
Right.
I think that was, but you can talk, if you have a question on parking, let's bring it up tonight, but I think when...
And then the other question was about construction and business continuity, but that, and that was a question of mine, but that doesn't, maybe we might get to that tonight.
Some of the questions may be, if they didn't require a trade-off?
Right. So we kind of focused for tonight's...
Discussion on the...
Because we didn't want to go to two, I guess.
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to know when we're going to get to it.
All right.
Right. There is more information to come. We've been doing the best we can to compile from the various sources. So there's massive quantities of reading material at this point, and there's still some gaps. But for tonight, we were really trying to get to some of these questions. It did have trade-offs.
All right. So for, just, Councilwoman Kostic, just for example, on the other packet, on page 11, there are answers to the question on parking and stuff.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Page 11.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, I think our focus for this was really having the things that were trade-offs that we'd want to...
Would you say that applies to questions about delivery as well, unloading and so on?
Delivery?
Unloading trucks and so on?
I think we could ask, and I think a lot of those questions that were submitted were related to the traffic thing.
I think it has more to do with the corridor. It's tonight, but if it's, but if it's a traffic-related thing, that's another time.
It was like timing of...
Okay.
Yeah. So are we ready to go on to environmental matters?
Is that me?
Or anyone?
So, as I mentioned, the, I did kind of compile the stormwater process, because it is something that people have asked a lot of questions about, and if you don't mind, I'd like to go through the document that I prepared for this. So, this is a site which, over 40% of the overall parcel is paved parking lot, and so therefore it qualifies as a redevelopment project under state and city stormwater requirements. What that means is that you need to handle 50% of water quality from that, from the impervious area. And so, you either have to reduce the impervious area by 50%, or you have to provide water quality treatment for at least 50% of the impervious area for a one-year storm, which is 2.6 inches of rain, or accommodate another two. Which I know, I'm listening to it right now. Listening to it. Can I just, redevelopment because the lot is already paved? That's right, because it's already over 40%... So from a stormwater point of view, it's already developed? That's correct. Because it's, it's over 40% of the, of the lot is paved. Yeah, I've just had a lot of people ask me about that. That's right. You know, this isn't, for any area that is currently not paved, but which would be encroached upon with the development, it's 100% water quality treatment for that extra portion. So, the portion that, that this may go over the, kind of the back line of the parking lot, that's where it has to be 100% water quality treatment. Does not deal with quantity, and that's also referred to as recharge volume or infiltration or channel protection. And I guess I want to let people know that the state requirements that we, that we enforce are fairly substantive requirements. And contrary to apparently how the county functions and a number of other jurisdictions, we rarely issue waivers. We, we want to see that 50% level handled on-site for almost every project, and we would not issue a waiver for this site. The, in, the, some people have asked, should we, can we do a higher, require a higher level than the 50% water treatment? And our code allows the city to request additional treatment for sites that have a history of flooding, or that the downstream water, stormwater infrastructure is unable to manage the stormwater from the site. This site does not have a history of flooding, and we don't have a problem with the downstream infrastructure. So this would be something that would be kind of above our level of authority in, in terms of what we would require. It's also a difficult site, because other than the parking lot, you've got a slope. And so, treatment on-site on the slope can have erosion issues and that kind of thing, and treat, and it could hurt the trees and that kind of thing. So what they have proposed is, I've heard all kinds of different terms for it, but it's essentially a large, kind of planter box with vegetation that the water would filter through. And this would be on the backside of the building, and that way you don't have to, and then it would go into a pipe that would go into the stormwater system. I had a couple of conversations about some of the interests that had been discussed before about using kind of permeable pavement along the front of the property, where the trees are, and that kind of thing. And apparently, State Highway has not permitted that. State Highway has, has recently turned down that option in the right-of-way on a project on New Hampshire Avenue that we've been involved in. And if you look in that area, there are no inlets. There are no stormwater inlets along Carroll Avenue near this property. And so, any kind of treatment or action from near the front of the building would end up needing to be piped to the back of the building and into these facilities. And that's, it's not something that can, that State Highway would allow to be handled kind of in front of the building, where it would go within to the right-of-way. So I just wanted to provide that information, because it was, a lot of this was new information, frankly, for me. And it does have some impact when we look at these trade-offs. What it means is that the green roof's really important for treating the on-site water filtration to the state standards, and, and it also helps limit the size of that planter kind of thing in the back. It's a trade-off about how those things are done, but I did want to share that information with you. And I don't know if you want to talk about storm, I also have some information, just, I could talk a little bit more, again, about the trees, but...
Before we move on to that, I'd just like to clarify what you mean. S H A won't allow the permeable, permeable pavement in the right-of-way, but it could theoretically be in the portion that is, or will that, I guess that will all be right-of-way all the way up to the front of the building, or...
No, it wouldn't all be right-of-way up to the front of the, it could be somewhere else, but we would really need to make sure that it doesn't end up going into the right-of-way, because S H A doesn't have the infrastructure there.
Okay.
Any questions on stormwater that the city managers presented?
I have a... I have a very short question about the maintenance of the green roof, because that is something that, you're shaking your head yes already, that is something that has to be maintained on a regular basis by people who know what they're doing, or it won't deliver the benefits that are intended. So can you say a little bit about how you're planning to do that?
I think right now we have, on projects we've done, either four or five, I can't remember, green roofs, and there are specialized companies that do that. We, there's a company out of Baltimore area called Furbish, and you're right, they, they charge a lot of money, and they come and they snip and they...
Yeah. Yeah. It's worth it, though.
But it is a specialty, and so it's something you have to do.
All right. So you already, you already got that. And I'm aware of the trade-off between the green roof and the size of the, on the back end, and I, I see, and then the bigger the back end, then the more that affects the trees that you're just about to get to. It's got a structure, you know, it would be a structure that would then, it would help identify, you know, it helps limit impacts to the rest of the area, but it's bigger, it could be bigger and bigger, and so you have to monitor that, figure out what's a good balance. Yeah, and I, I had some factual questions about the slope and the stormwater and the trees that somebody can give me some other time, not now, because it's late. And I wouldn't know it. But did you...
No, I think the city manager knows more about stormwater management in Montgomery County than I do, so. She's your guy.
I learn all kinds of things. Yeah. And, and you said earlier about the staging, about the timing of the city permits relative to the county. That's right. So the stormwater concept plan has to go very early. There's already been discussions about that. And the trees has to go late, in essence, is the summer. The city tree process is much later on, yeah. And this, and the stormwater permit process is much later on. It is part of the site plan process, but you have to get pretty far into it to be able to do the calculations for the stormwater permit application. Do we, can we go on to another energy, environmental topic?
Yep.
Quickly. So as part of the lead 4.0, measures that you are going to take, I'd like to hear whether there can be a commitment to energy neutral on the building, either on-site or off. And that would be, could be in the form of, if you have a green roof, you're not going to have solar panels. I got that. But there's also, like, the city purchases wind energy, wind-produced energy, electricity, instead of regular electricity. So, so I'd like to urge you to look at some of those, some of those facilities so that you can, you can meet an energy-neutral requirement.
Okay. We will certainly push as far, hard as we can. I'm not going to stand here tonight and, you know, promise that to energy, but it's something that will push, I mean, lead gold, especially with the newer standards. I know some people have sort of poo-pooed that and said that's nothing. I mean, that, it's a lot.
It is a lot.
It's a lot. Especially in a multi, and one of the things that makes more difference, a multi-tenant building, you know, where you've got different types of things going on, so it is very tough. But that's something that, you know, we, it's in our practice as developers, and so we'll, we will push it.
Anything else, Councilmember DeBala?
Yes, but I think if I keep going, people will be really upset with me.
That's right. I got to go to work in the morning.
I got to catch a 7:00 AM flight to Denver, so, I mean, it's not going to bed tonight.
I would, I would appreciate being able to talk with, with one of the two of you about, and then, and then I would, anyone who wants to find out what I found out, I would be happy to share it.
Great. All right. So any other questions on environmental issues? If not, turn your papers back over.
You're going to collect them now?
I know, no, I'm not collecting them. And this is in preparation, and I know it's late, but, you know, and we will be, again, waiting on the final analysis of the traffic studies, but I want to know, is there anything people want to put on the table for the draft resolution regarding height at this time? Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, can you just say for a minute or two about what we're doing now, so...
Oh, so this right now is, I think it may be too late to do hand votes, because we're all tired, but I'd like to just get on the table so that we could compile what are some of the issues that you, that individual council members would like to see in a resolution. I think I can work with staff to put that together, and then we can bring that back to the, to the council, or some of the things may need further clarification. So would you like to have, put something forward?
Well, sure. I mean, I would like to propose, and I don't know the specifics, but a reduction in height of the building, more public space and a combined trash facility. And I can take some time a little bit later to say exactly how, how that would work and what the details would be.
Let's just do one at a time. So on reduction in height, do you have a...
Well, I like to just get back on what the specific numbers would be, yes.
Okay. On height, are there any other things that people would like to put on the table?
I think we, I think...
Well, no, I mean, you had, I think Councilwoman DeBala, you had some things that were more specific about the parapet or something. Yeah.
I was just going to remind you of that. That's all.
Okay. All right. So we'll look at Councilmember Kovar putting forward a reduction in height in public space. Councilmember Kovar, do you want to put forward the piece that you had in your drawing?
Well, a version of that, I need to just go back and, and look more closely at it before I lock in a specific amount.
All right.
But I think the thing on the parapet was that Mr. Washington was going to look to see if there was something possible on that.
Yeah. So, so put another way, I would propose that the height be, at least in part, in reconfiguring the parapet.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. I, this is, like, exactly.
And we look to you all to tell us what's possible.
All right. Councilmember Kovar has provoked, proposed the version of the public space. Councilwoman Kostic asked for feedback on moving back the elevator tower. And then when we got to the roof, Councilmember Siemens and I requested more information about whether or not there could be access for maybe the restaurant or something, and the addition of the stairs for the future. Does that make sense? Okay.
I would also like to add for public space, and exactly what this looks like, we can determine as we work on the resolution, but something regarding additional public space added if, if the lay-by is moved.
Right.
And what was the answer on the, on the bathrooms upstairs, on the top floor, that they were or weren't required? I, I kind of lost that in the shuffle.
I, I think, but we probably need to clarify that if, as Councilmember Siemens was suggesting that the space not be just open to anyone, but be connected to one of the businesses, and I'm looking at staff now, and that if that's the possibility, there may not have to be public restrooms up there, because there would be...
It could go down to the place where...
Right. But we would find out if that's actually true and what other requirements there would be. We definitely know if that space is increased above the 750 square feet, there needs to be another way off the roof.
But it would be a great place for a good evening in the summer.
That's your opinion, or maybe some people who live on Columbia may not think so, so... I guess. I'll give them your phone number. On the trash and recycling, a couple of us put forward the widening of the corridor. And I wrote space for storage. I think that was just in...
That was the second trash story.
Yeah. I think that was just a note. And so far, I have nothing under environmental matters.
I'm sorry, you said widening of the corridor. Did you say anything, what did you say about the trash? Accommodating the co-op trash there?
Yeah, we, I think that's under, like, that list of things we have regarding...
Okay.
The mediation between N D C and the co-op.
Okay.
Those things. Right?
Mayor, so I'm a little bit confused about what's happening, because, I mean, obviously, we would like to get some direction, and it's really late, so it's really hard for that to happen now.
Right.
But, you know, I think for many of these various things, there may not be a majority for some of these proposals, or there, there's some weighing, and so I guess maybe we can find a way to have, to get the direction relatively soon.
I think it's relatively soon. I was going to suggest, talk to you tomorrow and staff to see on some of these questions, if we could just recirculate the information and maybe do this next Wednesday.
Okay.
Because I think the following Wednesday, we're not meeting. But we can, right, because the 30th, we're not meeting.
Right.
To be able to just put the finer points on this.
And not have other, because I don't, I really hope we don't have a lot of junction discussion next week, because we have a whole lot of other things to talk about.
I know, we do, we do. And I just think it's, I, my hope had been to take some hand votes tonight, but I think there are still, I think we're all really tired, and I'm not sure people are up for hand votes this evening.
I didn't think we were going to be discussing it today, but...
I was going to say, I'm arguing later today.
Yes. So, um.
So on, on environmental, I'm not prepared to propose any additions to the resolution, pending some discussion, more technical discussions with, and one thing that we skipped was the rear facade, so at some point, we need to talk about that.
No, yes.
So things like the, the possibilities for designing the rear facade, and that's more an informational one, and we can make suggestions, but it really doesn't, it's not a, it doesn't really have the kind of trade-off discussion that we had kind of focused this tonight's discussion.
Okay, so that's on that other list of, it's not trade-offs, but we still need.
And actually, there is some information in here that has been compiled.
Right, so what we tried to really focus on tonight were things that there were trade-offs, and we wanted to have a conversation about, um, and, um, I had hoped that we would have had more conversation, but I think it's really hot, and it's late, and I don't think it would, um, be good for us to have, um, to make decisions right now on these things. So, um, thank you to everyone for joining us this evening, and we're adjourned.